Okay, it's six o'clock, so let's go ahead and call this meeting to order of the Edgefield County Council on April 5th, 2022. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. Let me just say this at the very outset, we know the weather's bad, thank you for coming out. If the weather for some reason turns bad, and you know what I mean by bad, we have Susie Spurgeon here, our EMA Director. She tells me that we would shelter in place right here, so there's no reason to worry about anything, but if there is, she's going to tell us what to do in case of an emergency, so we couldn't have a better person sitting here, so just FYI, we'll let you know if anything happens. And with that, we're going to call this meeting to order. We're going to start with a moment of silence for Ms. Cooper, who was of course Scott Cooper's mother, who passed away last week. Also, we're going to hold a moment of silence for Jerry Bass, a longtime county transportation committee member who passed away last month, and also Michael Medlock, who passed away last month, and he was a former county attorney. So if everyone will please stand for the moment of silence. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Tiffany Ireland for our prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, I just come to you tonight and thank you for the ability to gather here. We are just so fortunate to live in a country that we can convenia- convenia- like this and run our government in the way that we do, and I just thank you for that, I pray that it will always be this way. Dear Lord, I thank you for those who have come out tonight who care about our county. I pray that you will give open hearts and minds, and I pray for my fellow council members, dear Lord, that you will give us wisdom, that we will be able to do the right thing, the thing that is pleasing to you for this county, dear Lord. Thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon this county and us individually, because we know we are just so blessed, dear Lord, and I thank you for that. I pray for the safety of all of us tonight as we weather this storm together, dear Lord, get us all home safely. And again, I just thank you for everything that you have given to us, and again, pray for wisdom and guidance throughout this meeting. And it's in your son's, Jesus's name that I pray, amen.
Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. So next council is the approval of the agenda, and under that, I'd like to offer a couple of changes that I'd like to ask that we can make. First, I want to make a comment on the public hearing, which is coming up in a few minutes. We inadvertently didn't properly advertise this public meeting, so we're going to hold another public meeting on the Kendall here, Kendall Mill topic before third reading in May. However, counsel, I'd like us to proceed with the public hearing tonight, so we can hear from those who are here, including the developer. There's no violation for holding two public hearings on the same topic, but we'll properly advertise the other one. And I will say to those who are present, your comments tonight mean just as much as your comments next time. If you want to comment next time, you can at a public hearing. It'll be, it'll be the legal one, if you will, this will just be one we're going to have because we're going to accept information. But whatever you say tonight, doesn't have to be said again at the next public hearing, unless you want to. So this is just like a public hearing, because it is a public hearing. So I just want to make sure, counsel, if that's okay, we'll go ahead and go with that, if there's no objections for counsel in holding that public hearing. The two other changes I'd like to make to the agenda, I'd like to move the Anderson resolution from new business and take it up right after the approval of the minutes. Just to be courteous of their time. And then also, counsel, if there's no objection, I'd like to move the Duben Guru Group presentation from old business to the first presentation in the public hearing. That way, I believe those citizens who have some questions may hear the answers there. It will also allow them to answer questions that citizens may come up with during the public hearing that were not answered. We would still leave the actual business where it is for later discussion and a decision by counsel. This change would only be to let all parties involved discuss this fully during the public hearing portion. Then we don't have to repeat that discussion when it comes up on the agenda for the business side of the work. So without, is, first, are there any objections from counsel for those changes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as I have amended it?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, and vice chairman makes the motions, they're second.
Second.
Mr. Cooper, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is our approval of the minutes. We have so many just for expediency, counsel. We got one, two, three, four, five, six different meetings dating back from January through the middle of March. We've finally caught up on our minutes, and I thank the clerk for doing that, that's very difficult work. Are there any one of those that anybody has any changes to, and that's how I'll, I'll take that up, any changes to any of those six sets of minutes? Okay, if there are none, then I would just ask for a motion to approve all six at the same time. So is there a motion to approve the six sets of minutes that are on the agenda tonight?
None.
Mrs. Ireland makes a second, makes the motion, and Mr. Talbert, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. The agenda was amended to put new business, the resolution, so let me go to new business. And this is a, this is consideration of approval of a resolution honoring Linda and Johnny Anderson. And I would like to read the resolution for those who are here. This is a resolution recognizing Linda and Johnny Anderson for their many years of service to the Edgefield County and its airport. Whereas, Edgefield County Council wishes to recognize those persons who have dedicated their lives to providing services to the citizens of Edgefield County. And whereas, for decades, Linda Anderson was a citizen leader who attended many Edgefield County meetings and events, including public hearings, Edgefield County Council meetings, planning commission meetings, and many other meetings, all to provide her perspective, support, dedication, and to inform others through her community webpage. And whereas, she and her husband Johnny faithfully managed the Edgefield County Airport for over 20 years as a fixed base operator. And whereas, together they built several new hangars, holding over 30 aircraft, maintained the runways, terminal, and all aspects of the airport. And whereas, they have maintained the airfields and the operation of the airport at no cost to the county, provided a tax base, and needed service in, to many in our county. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Edgefield County Council in session duly assembled the fifth day of April 2022, that we honor and recognize them both by naming the airfield in the, at the Edgefield County Airport, the Linda and Johnny Anderson Airfield, and erect a sign in their honor, adopted this fifth day of April 2022. Counsel, is there a motion to accept this resolution?
No, no.
Mr. Ireland makes the motions, they're second. And Dr. Kenyon, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. I know we got Johnny and a couple of his family members, maybe y'all would, would come up and get a picture with us if you wouldn't mind.
Say if you were to talk to back in mercy. Thank you, Doc. And I, I sure appreciate it, it's, it's an honor to me. I'm not very much at giving speeches or anything, but I, I, I've had some good years and some bad years, most of it's good. And I'm hoping to stay a good while longer, so appreciate it.
Appreciate Linda and you, so thank you.
Thank you.
And at some point, hopefully, the administrator will tell us in the next month or so, we can have a, another ceremony, if you will, out at the airfield, we erect the sign that was discussed in the resolution.
It's being made as we speak. All right, so next on the agenda is our guest speaker, Grant Davis, who is with Malden and Jenkins, our auditor. So I'll ask him for his presentation on the audit report for the past fiscal year, so, Grant.
Well, thank y'all for having me here, here this evening to go through this. Similar to in the past, I have prepared a little presentation, basically just to give you some information about who we are as a firm, even though I know y'all are familiar with us now, to go over some financial statement highlights from fiscal year 21, to discuss some things that we have to communicate to you all as independent auditors, and you all being the county council, and then to look at some accounting standards that are coming up in the future to address, and then certainly answer your questions. So as I go through this, please holler out at any time if, if you have any questions about anything. I realize you don't have the document itself in front of you, but hopefully this will summarize that enough. I will say, before we get into that, we've issued three documents, as has been customary. The first is the biggest one of all, it's the, the financial statements themselves, or the annual comprehensive financial report. We've issued our opinion on that, which I'll refer to here in a moment, and it's included in, in that document. In addition to that, we've issued what we call our auditor's discussion and analysis. This document's about 25 pages long, it's basically to memorialize those communications that we have to have with you all that are required in that document, I'm going to go through them anyway here, but you'll have those for you. There's also some potentially helpful charts and some analysis on changes in financial statement elements in there as well. And then the third and final document is what we call our management letter, it's just about two pages long. It includes just some recommendations, very simply just recommendations there. So again, those three documents, and I, I just brought the hard copy tonight, in fact, they're over there in a box, so I'm sure you all have plenty of time to look over those at your leisure in the coming weeks and months. But anyway, just to start out with, I'll just refer to who we are as a firm. Again, I'm with Malden Jenkins out of Columbia, firm's been around about 100 years. We do about 350,000 annually in terms of service to our clients, and about 125,000 of that is audit work for governments. So it's about 30% of our firm. We audit 67 counties as a whole, 13 of those are in South Carolina. And then importantly, especially since Edgefield County submits the annual comprehensive financial report to GFOA for the certificate each year, we have a number of clients, 154, that also participate in that program to help ensure that the county meets all those reporting objectives and requirements to continue to, to receive that award. And I'll mention that as well, in the 2021 document itself, you will see the certificate for, for 2020 included there. This 2021 document was just recently submitted to GFOA, they will continue to review and grade that, and then we have all certainty that they will continue to award the certificate for 2021 in the coming months. This is just very briefly sort of a table of contents to the document. The first one's the introductory section, and I referred to that certificate just a moment ago, but as you're looking at the document, front, center are our opinions on the document, followed by the management's discussion and analysis, and I think I've said this before, but ultimately, the document's 100, almost 115 pages long. If you're going to read two sections throughout the document, I would suggest it be our opinion, which is that second bullet there on pages 133, which again is, is a clean opinion. And then the second's the MDNA, which is the management's discussion and analysis, and that provides some historical analysis, fiscal year 20 as compared to fiscal year 21, as well as a look into the year we're in now, fiscal year 22, some budget trends, things like that. So again, overall, if I had to suggest two, two areas out of 115 pages, that'd be where, where I would say to look. We talked about this a little bit, but I'll jump down to that fourth bullet. This would be the fourth year that the county has received the certificate of achievement in financial reporting. The fiscal year 21 document will be for the fifth year that that's been attempted, and again, we feel sure that the county will receive that, that award again. And it does go above and beyond basic financial reporting requirements. It's a significant document, as you can tell, that has a lot of different information in it that is not required by state law or federal statute, but again, just in the, for the sake of transparency. So that'll lead us to our audit opinion. Very briefly, the county is responsible for the financial statements themselves. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on those financial statements, we've done that. It's a clean opinion or unmodified. The financial statements were prepared in accordance with GAAP, which I'm sure you've heard before, but generally accepted accounting principles, and we've issued our reports and conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, which is the GAAS up there, and government auditing standards, which is the GAS acronym there. And again, clean opinion issued on the, on the financial statements. This section just sort of begins some financial statement highlights, and you can see here that this is basically the first half of the balance sheet focusing on assets. County had about $30 million in total assets, about 14.3 million of that is cash, and that includes the first tranche of the ARPA monies in there. $3 million of receivables, that'd be taxes receivable, accounts receivable, and others, and about $10.3 million in capital assets, which are net of accumulated depreciation. The second section here in red is your liabilities, $22 million in liabilities. About 3.4 million of that is current or due within one year, and about 17.9 is long-term or doing more than one year. The vast majority of that long-term portion is the pension liability, at about 15 and a half million dollars. And the pension liability did go down a little bit from fiscal year 20 to 2021, largely due to a very positive market environment for the plan itself at the statewide level. That probably won't hold, you know, that fluctuates from year to year, but did see a decrease in that overall. And then we get net position or equity, $8.3 million. The largest portion of that is what's called the net investment capital assets. It's broken down into two additional components, which are restricted, you can see there at 7.9 million, and then unrestricted of 9.4 million. And at the end of the year, at the end of fiscal year 21, we've got an increase in equity of about $1.1 million, or 15%. So very positive from that perspective. Just beyond that, you'll see the statements for the individual funds themselves, and of course, the one that everybody's most concerned with generally is the general fund. $10.6 million in assets at the end of fiscal year 21 for the general fund, about 9.3 million of that is cash, so that's an extremely liquid general fund, versus about $2.9 million in liabilities. The largest portion of that, those liabilities are the $2.6 million associated with the ARPA monies. Those monies aren't recognized as revenues until they're spent, and I know that may sound odd, but they have to be shown as unearned until you have obligated and ultimately spent those monies. So they'll be recognized some in this current fiscal year, as y'all view some of that, and then down the road. But right now, it's showing up as a liability. And then $7.5 million in fund balance for the general fund, which is about a $1.5 million increase over fiscal year 20. Now, it's important to note that fund balance figure does not include the ARPA monies. So that $2.6 million is in liabilities, which means it's not in your equity totals, it's not in fund balance. So $4.8 million of that $7.5 is considered unassigned, which is available to be spent. It's not subject to any restriction or anything like that. The income statement for the general fund, $12.1 million in revenues versus about $10.5 million in expenditures. And again, we, we mentioned this on the previous slide, but about $1.5 million increase in fund balance from 20 to 2021. Just beyond that slide, you'll notice the, the budget comparison. And you can see budgeted revenues for the general fund, $10.3 million versus actual revenues of $12.1 million. So that's a $1.8 million positive variance in terms of revenues. Expenditures budgeted at $11.5 million, actual expenditures incurred, $10.5 million. So another positive budget variance of about $975,000 there. And then there are other budget items, transfers between funds totaling $1.2 million. The actual amount was monies out, so about 120,000, so that has a negative variance of about $1.3 million. But overall, 1.8 plus 975,000 minus 1.3 is very positive in terms of the general fund's actual numbers in comparison with, with the budget that was ultimately adopted. Just after that, this is just a pie chart, I know it's a little bit hard to see, but the big red section is tax, property taxes, that make up the vast majority, 57% of the general fund's revenues. I won't go into any other details necessarily on that. The next one is just the same kind of concept, pie chart by expenditures, and the large section, the blue piece of the pie there, is public safety at 42%, and that's typical for county governments to have a very significant portion of their general fund's operations associated with public safety. Just after that, the staff agencies, that's administration, finance, so forth and so on, that make up those, again, those largest portions of the general fund's expenditure pie. This chart is just a chart that, that shows the change, or excuse me, the total fund balance of the general fund for the last five years. So back from 2017 to 2021, you can see a big increase in fiscal year 21, getting you up to about $7.5 million in, in fund balance. Just after that, if you're looking through the document, you'll see about 50 pages of footnotes. Ultimately, not much has changed in the footnotes, except dates and numbers certainly, but the verbiage is all very much similar to in prior years. After that section, you'll notice our compliance section. So we've issued two reports in the document, the first one's our opinion on the financial statements. The second opinion is our compliance report, we call it our yellow book report. It's a report on the county's internal controls and compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. It is not intended to provide an opinion like the first one is, but simply to note if we had any instances of internal control deficiencies or non-compliance. You can see in that last bullet, we had no non-compliance issues, but we had four material weaknesses in internal control and one significant deficiency in internal, in internal controls that we noted in fiscal year 21. The following slide goes through those. The significant deficiency is sort of a redo from past years, it's very simply staff, minus staff in the finance department. There were overlapping duties associated with payroll, HR, personnel functions that in a good control environment should not be there. I anticipate as, you know, the positions are filled and more people are involved in the process, that that would go away. At least that's what happened historically. Beyond that, the material weaknesses are very much just a function of the adjustments that we're required to make to get the, the records from the, the information that we receive in the audit to this final document that we've issued our opinion on. Those are, I've very simply broken those down into these kind of four big categories. The year-end closing procedures, the capital assets, which was a, a pretty big hurdle this year for a, a number of reasons, to get that information generated and, and input so that we could audit it. And then basically, all this is related to accruals. So you've got your cash basis and budget basis information that you all operate with and make decisions on throughout the year. That all has to be converted to an accrual basis of accounting. These various items are largely just due to accruals, getting those things recorded, and that needs to be done ultimately as a part of the closeout process. Just after that, we had two recommendations. The first one is again, capital assets related, this is not new, this has been a recommendation for some time. But basically, the capital asset listing has a lot of assets that have a vague description or may or may not even still be in use by the county. We just recommended that the county conduct an inventory and update those listings, identify all the assets that, that are still in use, and adjust those accordingly. And the second one is the information technology and cybersecurity. I don't, I don't, just due to this being a public setting, I'd rather not speak a whole lot about it, but generally, there's, we recommend that there be a cybersecurity framework that's followed in developing all the policies associated with, you know, patches, user access, so forth and so on. Relatively detailed recommendation, if you read it in full, and we'd be happy to, to try to address that as we go. But there were, based on a questionnaire that we asked, be filled out each year, there were some elements of a framework and a risk management policy that, that appeared to be missing, so we've made that recommendation that that be addressed. Just after that, these are the required communications I mentioned at the beginning. Basically, the, our reports include, and the financial statements themselves include judgments, estimates. We did have audit adjustments, but again, we've issued that unmodified opinion, we're independent of the county. And there are a number of others, again, memorialized in that auditor's discussion and analysis document for you all to, to read. This is very much the same thing, we didn't have any difficulties in dealing with management, we ultimately didn't have any disagreements with management, we don't believe that there are any uncorrected misstatements, so that the financial records are free of material misstatement. And again, just in case we hadn't said it enough, we're independent of the county as required. This la, or I think next to last slide is just to look at some new accounting standards that are coming up in the next couple of years. The biggest one is the first one, GASB 87, which is about lease account, or lease accounting. That's going to have a pretty significant impact on most governments that have any kind of leases, whether you're leasing something from someone else, or leasing an asset to another party, whether that be a building space, or whether a lot of places have gone to leasing their entire vehicle fleet. The accounting for that's going to change significantly in how all that's, is, different from how that's historically been recorded. And again, that's, that's for the year we're in now, so there'll be a lot, a lot to do relative to that. Questions about anything? I know that was probably information overload.
Counsel, do you have any questions of our auditor?
Will you provide a book, a booklet for us?
Yes, ma'am, they're actually, I think, right over there in the corner. Okay, maybe moved, but, right, we've got, I, I've got them here, I, I printed them out just in case there was something very specific that you all asked, but there's the 115 page conference financial report. The, this is that auditor's discussion and analysis document, it's about 25 pages long, and then this is the, the management letter with recommendations, but they're all in a box over there, yes, ma'am.
So Grant, let me ask one question, just generally speaking, how would you assess the financial health of our county?
I think from a financial perspective, the county's doing great, that the bar chart of the general fund's fund balance, I think is helpful to look back over the last five years and see how that's grown. The statistical section of, of the financial statements themselves has a number of 10-year schedules, so this year and then nine years ago, to look at, you know, how net position equity has changed, what the general fund has done over the last 10 years. So I think that would probably be very helpful to look at as well, but, you know, the, the biggest new thing for this current year we're in, or well, last year and this year now, are the ARPA monies. And that, you know, just a significant amount of money that's been given to be spent on very specific things to most local governments, and it is a huge amount of money relatively speaking. I don't know that Edgefield County has received, what was it, $5.7 million, what we talked about, or something like that, 5.3? I don't know that Edgefield County has received $5.3 million in the last 15 years. And for that all to happen at one time, and of course, that creates its own compliance challenges, that if you spend more than 750,000 in federal money in a year, it triggers a compliance audit. I don't know that Edgefield County's had a compliance audit like that in a very, very long time. But, you know, certainly good for the initiatives that you all can come up with. I know premium pay has been low-hanging fruit for a lot of governments to go ahead and get that out, to begin using those monies, and then, you know, the rest of it, you just got to figure out how to use it and, and do that the right way ultimately. But yeah, from a financial perspective, I think everything looks, looks very good.
Thank you. Nothing else from counsel? Okay, thank you, Grant.
Thank you.
We're required to approve the, or accept us as information, at the least.
If I could say something before we do that. Grant, I really appreciate your patience in working with us. As counsel knows... As counsel knows, and a lot of you in the audience know, last summer, we went through a complete change in our finance office. Everybody in that office is brand new. TAS had to really work hard to catch up, and there were several things that, documents that we could not find. And so Grant was very patient, working with us, especially on these assets, and so I'd like to thank you and your firm for working with us, and TAS for all the hard work that she put in to get this to where we are today.
Yeah, I just, I'm glad. I'm glad for TAS. I'm sure she's glad it's everywhere. We're going to move on to that, all right?
Yeah, the next one's right around the corner. All right. Thank you. So counsel, we need to accept this audit as information, so is there a motion to do that?
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cooper makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Talbot, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. I meant to do this at the beginning of the meeting, and I'll just do this now, Mr. Cooper, if you're, if you're, I don't want to surprise you here, but as a, as a point of personal privilege, I might call on him for just a few words he wanted to make tonight, so I'll turn it over to him.
I just wanted a moment of personal privilege to thank the community and county council. Most didn't know my mother had been struggling with cancer for about 19 months until the last 30 days, and I just want to thanks, thank counsel for being so gracious. Everybody attended on Sunday, my mother's memorial service. The family's very grateful for that. We're also grateful to TAS and Ms. Ubanks who attended, as well as the bouquet of flowers, and as well as the community who reached out to us during this time. We're very grateful, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next is our comments from the public. So I'm going to try not to confuse this, so let me see if I can line this out for you. When you, when we have a public hearing, particularly one that I know a lot of people want to speak at, we don't have a sign-up sheet for that. So if you want to speak at the public hearing, I'll be calling on you as you raise your hand, and we can call if you need to come up. So in other words, this public comment period is for items on the agenda except for the Kendall Mill public hearing. So if you signed up for that, you want to just tell me when I call your name, I'm waiting to the public hearing. If you're here to talk on anything else on the agenda, then I'll, you can use your five minutes here. Is everybody kind of got that? Is everybody good? Do you have the sheet down there for, for the first public hearing? Oh, excuse me, public comment period? Again, if you signed up and you wanted to speak at the public hearing, then just tell me, we'll roll you over to that in just a minute. Thank you. Okay, let's see. Summers Pandavis, you're going to hold off. Kathy Eckery? I can't pronounce it. You're going to wait and use yours in the public hearing?
No.
Okay. Because you wrote down Kendall Mill, so just asking.
Right, but you took care of that, but I've got, I've got about five things I need to talk about. I'm on both of those.
All right, just to remind everybody, you have five minutes in this section, so.
I'm Kathy Eckery, Sandy Springs Road, Trenton. I do have a problem. The agenda is posted on Monday afternoons. Is that a state law or county law, or is it just the way we do things? Because there's not enough time from Monday to tonight to be able to look at this stuff. So these are the things that I found just on the paperwork that I would like somebody to look at, and one of them is Duban Guru on that special assessment. The wordage was changed from last month to this month, but that's an agenda thing. Also, the other agenda thing was on the budget portion of the agenda that was submitted, it looked like we were sitting on 1.1 billion dollars in general fund, but that's that American Rescue plan that the state's holding on the county, this stuff. So that's really an issue with me, is if we can expedite getting the agenda out just a little bit earlier so that you have a chance to read it and look at it and digest it. And that's all for this session.
Thank you. And I do want to answer one question, because it comes up periodically, and that is, when we put the agenda out. So state law requires us to put an agenda out at least 24 hours before a meeting. So you do it Monday afternoon for a Tuesday night meeting, that meets the requirement of the law. The law doesn't say we can't put it out earlier, but the issue becomes, for those who are interested, that things change. We had a change on Monday in this agenda, and we had to change it and give counsel a new agenda. So things change on the last day, and so it seems confusing to me if we were to put something out on, let's just say, Thursday, and we change it four times, you'd be standing up here telling me, why can't we get the agenda right? Why can't we put out one agenda? Why are you confusing us with four agendas between Thursday and Monday? I'd rather put out one agenda that's right. So it may have its issues, but at least it's only one agenda. So I just tell you, it's never an easy balance to do that, so just answer the question. Let's see, next is, let me see, Roger Timpson? And George Thornton, but you want to go second, George?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Secretary of the Edgefield County Civic League. We are requesting some funds for things, but let me clear up one thing. First of all, it's been told and mistakenly that Justin Guy is the director at the Tompkins Library. He was appointed interim director of the Edgefield County Genealogic, old Edgefield District Genealogical Society back in January. We do not have a director this time. Tanya Guy was our last director when she resigned and co-worked for the county. We are in the process of searching, which Mr. Thornton will discuss a little bit on that in a minute. So right now, there is no director of that. We're requesting some funds for things for the library over there. I got a list of things, I'm going to, I got called in last minute, Mr. Timman's our president. He's also the director, head of the Edgefield Town Election Commission, so he's involved with that today, so that's why he's not here and I'm here in his place. We're requesting tables and chairs, 24, a total of $864. Tables and folding chairs, $372. Computer desktop, three each, a total of $2,382. Printer and scanner, two each, for a total of $1,598. Microfilm reader, one, for $449. We're talking about painting the Tompkins Library and the Lynch Annex, which is a part of this complex there, $4,750. We're talking about doing the flooring in both of those buildings there, comes to about a total of $9,000. We are going to talk about moving the welcomes, the Tompkins Library has one interest in the Lynch Building, one interest right now. We're talking about making a separate interest in the Lynch Building just for the Welcome Center for Edgefield, that, so the people who have genealogical things go in one door, people who are coming for the welcoming thing to Edgefield County can come in another door and also set up a different arrangement there. We're looking at about $3,000 to set that up in another place. We're looking to put in a contingency of $2,500, so a total of $25,000 on that. We have, we have a number of people come in, I'll just give an example, Mr. Timman works on Saturday. This past weekend, he had somebody coming in from Grove Town who's moving to Mount Vintage. He had some people coming from Savannah Lakes, looking at Edgefield. I actually have two members in my church who've moved from Savannah Lakes to Pine Ridge Country Club, so we're having people looking at the county. We're also having a fair number of African-Americans who used to be in Edgefield County who moved north through many years ago. One, Ms. Jackie O'May recognized, Linda Bobian, who's deceased now, but I was on the planning commission with him with many years ago. He moved from Long Island down here, his wife, I think, is original Edgefield County Bettis Academy resident on that, so they moved down here. I have a friend, well, I grew up as a child, my babysitter, Elizabeth Williams, she moved back here for her husband, also from New York area, so we have an influx of people from a lot of African-Americans who moved north and now decided to come back south, and we welcome them back here. So we're having all that coming into that, and those people come looking for also things such as what happens down at Bettis Academy. I know you've got Biddle Hall down there. We have people coming looking at Pine Ridge Country Club, we have people looking at Mount Vintage coming in there. So we do have a welcoming place for people who are coming into the county, looking for what we have to offer, and we are also going to be talking to the Town Council of Trenton next week on the 13th, and Johnson Council on the 11th of next week on that. So those are all things we're doing right now in that program on that. So I'd be glad to answer any questions on this part if anybody has any questions.
I would like to ask, I can't figure out all these figures in my head, I wish I could, but what was that total?
$25,000 was the total on that. I got it on my sheet here. Mr. Timman hasn't broken it down on a more appropriate sheet for you to look at, so I'll be glad to get you and give it to office personnel here to, where you'd have it actually in a printed form.
And so what you, and so it's 25,000 total?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what are you asking from the council to present to, I mean, are you, is a certain figure you asking for?
Well, we don't have any, the Edgefield Civic League is members, has 12 members. There are, when somebody dies or somebody steps down, they are appointed by who's remaining on the board to that office. We do not have a membership as such. I got put on the board back in November, not because I'm a genealogical expert, but because I have a little business experience on that. So we are selected by remaining members. There's a comparable thing in this state. Clemson University has a seven life trustees. When one of them dies, retires, the remaining ones select who's going to be the next life trustee. In effect, we are, we didn't try to copy them, but that's the way it actually works on our board. We also work with Edgefield Genealogical Society, they do have our membership, that thing, something over 300 members on that, but we are a separate organization from them. What we do is we provide the building, we maintain the building, we pay all the expenses, we pay the light bill, water bill, whatever on that, so they do not pay anything as far as upkeep of the building. We are exclusively responsible for that. Due to the bylaws of Edgefield Civic League, we are, it's our responsibility to choose who is director for the Genealogical Society. It's in the bylaws, it's cut and dried on that. I was not part of the process of interviewing the person they're looking at to be the new director of that, so Mr. Thornton and his wife were more involved in that than I was, so I'd rather let them speak to that part of the program than for me to speak, with not as much knowledge as they have of that.
I have one question. I noticed in our workshop, what was your request, your total request?
$25,000 is our request on that, as much as you can. I know everybody's looking for money from the budget. I know we got, talking about American Recovery Act on that. I'm sure some of this can be covered, maybe most of that, for these, all of these are capital expenditure on that, so as much as we can receive. Like I said, we do not have dues, we do not have a membership to, quote, raise funds on that, and we do not have an endowment on that.
And you will ask, you are going, you are planning to talk to Trenton and Johnson?
Trenton and Johnson, yes, we are. We own the town council agendas for both of those next week. And we also own, we have been and are on the town council of Edgefield, of course.
Ms. Roger, I didn't hear you mention bathrooms in there. Is that on your list?
Yes, that's part of the thing, too, that, part of that's going to be painting that, part of that's in, I got thrown in this at the last minute, so I still have all the figures on that, but we'll do fix the floors on that and the bathrooms, and also in the kitchenette area there. It's both, both of them are very small areas, it's one-person bathroom, a very small kitchenette in there, so it's-
I asked because I didn't know until recently that when they let out, when they have court, people go over there and use the bathroom. Didn't know that. I didn't know that they flood over there to use that bathroom. Interesting, but, and I was told that the bathroom there is in need of some love.
Work, yes.
But I didn't know we were, people were-
Well, when they have public events on the square, it's the town directs people-
Only public.
So I would, it's our willingness to do, to use that as a public restroom versus having-
And you just have one?
Just one male bathroom, one female bathroom.
Okay, so you're seeing-
Two, there's one for each one on that, so, on that, but yes, it's, it's small, yes.
I was told also that when they had court trial, that a lot of them usually all rest from over there.
Yeah, I understand it had a trial about a week ago, and there were 10 people in line, so.
Right, I was told that.
I'm sorry we can't handle one at a time, or two, depending on men and women on that, but we are what we are on that. I'm sorry.
It's good, that's, that is good information for us to know compared to our budget workshop. None of that we indicated to, we didn't even, didn't even have knowledge of all of this, so we appreciate that.
We're sort of, we're the public face of Edgefield. I know Johnson has a chamber commerce, but since Edgefield is the county seat in the name of the county, people tend to come here first, not because we direct them, but that's just because of who we are on that, so we've become the public face for the county in a lot of cases on that.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a quick comment. One, we appreciate what you do and for what it's worth. The first thing I did when I moved here in 2013 was come visit your facility.
Thank you.
And I was grateful for what I learned while I was there.
Yeah, and I'm still learning, too, on that, myself.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Thornton's going to address the other part.
And while Mr. Thornton's coming up, I will, for counsel's purposes, I will read a sentence from the minutes we've already approved from the March 15th budget workshop, and Mr. Thornton presented there, and it says, let me get the right sentence here. "Mr. Thornton stated the Civic League Board of Directors respectfully request of Edgefield County Council provide $35,000 in annual support to continue civic league operations and housing of the Genealogical Society." So it was 35,000 was the request at the budget workshop. Not you can't change, but just letting you know, it was 35.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I'll try to be brief. I'm George Thornton. I'm the vice president of the Civic League. In addition to Mr. Timpson's request for $25,000 for capital items, I would like to discuss an item that we did not discuss at the workshop, and that is support, salary support for staffing a director of the Civic League. At the time, we did not have a viable candidate for that position, and that's part of the reason that we have reduced the capital request that we talked out, talked about at the workshop. We have now identified a woman who is extremely qualified and very much interested in taking the job and working with us. She has a master's degree in information and library science from the University of South Carolina. She has extensive library experience in Hilton Head and Bluffton, and she has worked for many, many years organizing and directing volunteers, which I would submit to you is a very different prospect from managing salaried and paid employees. The, we want to make an offer to her, and we're trying to work to balance our budgets and find the funding, but we would respectfully request that the county commission consider $25,000 contribution for her salary so that we can bring her in as the director. Her duties would include continuation of work as the director of the old Edgefield District Genealogical Society. More importantly, she has the experience, capability, and the bandwidth to, I think, be a great face for the county. She's got a lot of energy, she's very much interested in working with businesses and working with other civic community groups to organize events, and to, she has also skills with social media, and I think she can do a tremendous job of improving and expanding our image and awareness throughout the state and the region. So be happy to, rather than take too much time, be happy to answer questions that you might have about that. Mr. Chairman, I have a clarifying question. So between the two of you, we're asking for a total of 50,000. Correct. Okay, thank you. Which is an increase from the discussion at the-
And I have a question. You said a contribution. Are you wanting this to be like a one-time, or do you want this routinely to be in our budget or reoccurring?
We would prefer it to be included as a line item budget. However, we would gratefully accept one-time contribution.
And would this 25,000 be her salary, or is that just a contribution toward another figure?
That would be her full salary at this point, which has been negotiated.
Any other questions from counsel? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Let me leave this behind, this is her resume.
All right, thank you. All right, so next is Ken Durham. Ken, you said Kendall Mills. You want to hold off? All right. Next is Louis, Louis P. Law Enforcement Center in Texas, I think you say.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Recently saw an article in the Edgefield Advertiser, South Carolina passes budget allocation over 30 million to Edgefield County. Interesting things in that, 18 million allotted to the new law enforcement center is going to be taken out of that, and a lot of other incidental things as well that add up essentially to the 30 million. Now, that money that's being earmarked- Now, that money that's being earmarked towards that, is that money going to be returned to the public, to the citizenry? To all the people out here that pay our taxes, that have the, whatever means the revenue is taken by us, returned to us? Or is this money in addition to? Plain and simple, what's happening with the money that's thirty million that we're being taxed on already?
So if you're asking, I can, I can answer the question.
Please.
Uh, that money is from a plutonium settlement with the federal government, it is state money, we have no control over that thirty million.
I understand you have no control over the thirty million, but the thirty million that we are being taxed on for whatever incidentals, first one up is the eighteen million for the law enforcement center. I like the law enforcement center, but if, and I'd like to make sure that stays, it's an interesting thing that should be on the agenda in one fashion or another. But what my concern is, is all the millage, taxes, or whatever revenue is ascertained by the public here, is that money going to be returned to us, or is it going to be put into the general fund to be used for something else?
It means that the capital project sales tax wouldn't have to be renewed four or five times, it might only have to be renewed once or twice, so it would save you money in the long run.
So we are going to be, save the money, is there going to be a line item thing that will say how much we are actually being saved? Or is it just a general statement?
You avoid paying those taxes later.
And that's not, that's, the House just passed that, that's not a done deal, so the Senate still has to work on that, so.
Understood.
We, you know, that, those numbers are just from the House, and there's gonna be some negotiation there.
But anytime we have money coming towards us that we already have allocated by way of taxes, millage, or whatever revenue, should be addressed as being taken, not taken away from the public then, correct?
No, that's not correct.
So you take the money anyway?
I just, I just explained that to you, so I'm not gonna do it again, Louis, let's go, keep going.
That it's going to be taken and reduced at some point or another, but it doesn't say by how much. Is it going to be reduced by the, the money that we get from the thirty million or any other sources?
Some will have to discuss in the future with the capital project sales tax and where it goes.
Interesting, like to be included on that, thank you.
All right, next is Charles Kemp, Kendall Mill, I assume you wanna wait? All right, Rich Oster? You gonna wait? Okay. And then Jake Smith, Kendall Mill. You wait, okay? And that is everybody who signed up for the first public comment period, unless I miss somebody. All right, council will close the public comment period and move to reports, any questions or comments on the reports? Okay, hearing none, consent agenda, any changes we need to make to the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Talbot makes the motions, there's a second.
Second.
Ms. Ireland, second, send to discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. All right, project, public hearing of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven, eighty, to revise special tax assessment allowing up to twenty years for investment of over one million dollars. So as we discussed earlier, I will ask the, uh, Duban Guru group to please make their presentation first. So Mr. Administrator, would you like to introduce them?
David and Guru are from the Chicago area, and they're here to provide a PowerPoint presentation and to answer any questions the council may have concerning the Kenmill Mill project. So please come on up. Or you could just wink at them. We're low-tech here, Dave.
Well, um, members of the council, thank you very much for inviting us to come. Um, if I yawn, it's not because I'm bored of what I'm talking about. Um, Guru and I, uh, had a very early rise this morning, I think we woke up about three-thirty to, you know, get to the airport on time. Um, and, um, I wanna thank, um, all the people who came here. I know this is a presentation to the council, so, um, I don't mean to be talking, you know, with my back turned to you, so, um, any way that you'd like it, so, um. Oh, thank you, that, uh, people can be informed, um, you know, that would be great. So, um, once again, my name is David Duban, uh, my business partner is Gubin Aganat. Uh, we've been doing, um, development such like, such as this for, you know, better part of thirty years or so. And, um, uh, we found this mill about a year ago, and, um, think it'd be a wonderful project for your community. Um, I, you know, this is, everyone knows, I assume, um, about the mill and where it's located and the like. Um, and, uh, we're planning to do an historic renovation of it. This is a picture of it, um, or maybe a drawing from, uh, you know, days gone by. It doesn't look a whole lot different, um, now, except the chimney with the smokestack is, uh, not operational, um, to the best of my knowledge. Okay, so, once again, um, this is a small, tight-knit community, but we thought we'd, uh, show you where the mill is in proximity to other things. Um, it's not too far from, uh, a large lake, which I think is near the, uh, the bottom. And, uh, there's also a walking trail right now, which I think is one-way, but, um, we've been told that it's going to be uh, more of a circular, um, formation, and that'll be great for the community and great for the, um, for the development. The next one I, oh, and this is a site survey, uh, where you can, um, see a little more of the overall property. Um, you can see the mill, the parking lot, you can see the two, uh, retention ponds and the like, so. That's that, the next one you can pass. This is another photo of the, uh, mill, um, as you can see by the retention ponds, there, uh, I believe that was the heating plant at one time by the chimney. Um, the only thing that's left right there is the chimney, the other buildings have been razed, you know, several years ago. There's some, some more photos, that's the chimney, that's another part of it. Uh, you can continue, that's another picture, and that's another, uh, outlot building that we're also gonna renovate. Okay, if you could continue. So this is just the, some of our past projects, and we have a limited amount of time here. On the left is a hundred-and-twenty-year-old board of trade building, um, that we renovated into eighty or ninety units. Um, on the right is a, is a large three-hundred-thousand-square-foot, uh, building. Um, it was, uh, housed, uh, floor-shine shoes at one time, and you can see by the, uh, the photographs of the, uh, some of the work that we do. If you can continue that. There's another photo, another photo. Another building, uh, that's actually under construction in downside Illinois, it's an older picture, and you can continue. And it's, uh, sort of reminiscent of what it looked like in the, uh, probably in the thirties, yeah, I think you can see some model A's over there. And, uh, some more pictures of our work, and another one over there, and another one over there. Okay, so, uh, if you could, the next slide, that's great. Okay, so, in general, um, well, these are some of the general amenities for the building. You know, we wanna be pet-friendly, you know, to, to a point, you know, dogs that are certain weight. Um, we're gonna have a, um, open, common open space at the lower level for the new work-at-home, um, era that we're going to be in for, probably for the rest of our, our lives. And I can expand on that a little, a little more, but I think everybody understands how we're going with that. Um, exercise room, there'll be onsite management office, uh, tenant storage, a do, uh, a dog run or a park, bike storage, of course, Wi-Fi. It's important to have package lockers, uh, for either, you know, uh, regular dry goods or cold, because a lot of people now, and the younger people especially, um, are ordering online, you know, every day, um, instead of going to the market. Uh, there'll be a dog washing station, uh, we've been putting these in our developments over the last three or four years. Um, and for the life of me, I don't really understand it, because when we had our dogs, I usually just take them in the shower and wash them. But, you know, I've been told, um, that, you know, people like that, the younger people like that. And of course, um, there'll be hardwood flooring and things like that. Um, we don't think we're gonna have a pool, because generally the, the, uh, market, market rate units like this, um, people don't have a lot of kids that are, are, you know, in general, and if they do, they're very young. So we don't think it's gonna get used much, um, but other, uh, things like a place for it to sit and congregate and barbecue, uh, pickleball court slash, uh, tennis court, which is popular, and, um, of course, there's lots of green space. Now we go to some of the apartment amenities now, um, we've been going over the past few years, you know, keys are a thing of the past, a lot of these units, and a lot of folks, um, like to get into entry, you know, with their iPhones and things like that. Of course, it's a loft building, so we'll have exposed mechanicals and the like. Every unit's gonna have a washer and dryer inside the unit, which, um, a lot of younger people, um, you know, I've been told that, and we use them, but I've also been told that some people won't even look at apartments with, um, auto washer and dryer inside. So I think that's a function of, as people went to colleges in the last ten years or so, all the new dorms have washer, you know, the larger units and apartments all have washer and dryers inside, so everybody, you know, gets spoiled. But, you know, it is what it is. Um, the bedrooms are gonna have, uh, a queen bed frame with drawers for clothes, so they don't have to worry about, uh, any dresser space. Um, what's very important is in most of the units, um, in the loft area, we're gonna have a dedicated area of about sixty or seventy square feet for a work and home, um, space. You know, it used to be, we used to design units with a little three-foot area for a computer, you know, with the kitchen, okay? But, you know, those days are gone, people are gonna be working from home, full-time, part-time, and they need a more of a dedicated space. So that's very important. Um, and of course, hardwood floors and the, and the like. So this is an example of a, um, a typical unit, which we're still going through, um, which could be a little clearer. But, um, it's, uh, there's, uh, two levels, um, generally. Um, you've got your living room, a kitchen area, a full bath, um, and, um, you know, a washer and dryer. And then upstairs, on, um, another bedroom with a full bath, walk-in closet, and an area, as I mentioned, for an office space. Um, uh, and we're still going through some design considerations on that, but we think it'll be very, uh, very useful and, um, very efficient to heat. So, um, I wanna bring up a few more issues, and then, uh, which I think might, some of these things might be on your mind. You all can hear me, right? Okay, um, you know, you all here, spending your time here tonight while, you know, pouring rain, which I, you know, I really appreciate it, so it means you, you have interest one way or the other, you know, on this project, so I appreciate it. But, um, you know, this building, as you know, has been sitting pretty much not being used for any full potential for about twenty years or so. Um, so, um, either I'm the smartest person in the room or the, you know, the dumbest person in the room, but, you know, we think it's a, a really good project to generate, be an ec, economic generator for the overall, you know, community. You know, you all know that Generac came here a year ago or so and, um, supplied, you know, eight or nine hundred jobs. My understanding is they're gonna be coming in and providing another few hundred jobs. Um, and there's some other companies that are actually gonna be coming in as well. Um, so it's important for these employers to know that the community, um, has a hand in wanting to house their employees, and a lot of them, they'll be coming in, you know, don't wanna have a single-family house. You know, they want something trendy, they want something that's, um, that they can afford at a market rate with, you know, all the bells and whistles that they're, that they're used to. Development like this also helps breed other development. You know, um, this will be an economic generator, hopefully, so that the old hotel will also spur interest in that and also spur other businesses for, you know, coming in. You know, people, you know, all across the country, we hear, well, you know, I want this restaurant here, I want more services, okay? Well, in order for businesses to come in, you know, we need, you would need additional what we call rooftops. You know, you need more bodies in the community to substantiate a new business to come in. And, um, generally, in, um, that's, the best way to do this is with a renovation of old buildings like this. Um, admittedly, um, Congress forty years ago, uh, put into the tax code what's called an historic tax credit project that helps, um, alleviate some of the costs of construction, basically, so projects can get done. So for example, um, you know, because the rents, for example, are only one-bedroom, say it's a thousand dollars a month, okay? And no matter what, it's not gonna be significantly more than that. As a result, new construction of apartments in second-tier cities, and we do, eh, ninety-nine percent in second-tier cities throughout the country. Um, new construction is generally prohibited, so in the beginning. But after a while, um, when, um, there's additional economic drivers and more businesses come in, then new construction eventually, um, can be done. It's a, as I mentioned, it's a market-rate project, which eventually will hopefully increase your property values and, uh, make your properties, um, you know, worth more. Um, of course, um, it's an historic building, so it's the ultimate in green technology. Um, so, you know, we're saving things and, um, being more efficient by reusing an old building, even though, you know, we are still, um, gutting pretty much the entire building, taking out the windows, putting all new mechanical systems, you know, and the like, besides all the carpentry work and, and everything of that. Um, of course, jobs will be created from construction and, um, from new folks coming in and spending money. And, you know, generally, people who will rent here spend more money on things, um, than actually, you know, I do. You know, I don't go out to, you know, maybe I'm an old fart, but I don't go out to eat, um, as much as, you know, my grown kids do. So, um, um, that's an also important, uh, driver, and as I mentioned, um, we're very cognizant of the, uh, work and home, for lack of a better word, phenomena, um, that, um, there's no looking back. Everyone from people our age to especially younger people coming up, you know, will demand adequate space in their units and the, you know, the buildings they live in, uh, for work at home. So, um, I don't think there's any, you know, denying that, and I see, you know, from all the way from the east coast, you know, to the west coast and every place in between. So, and I know I'm, I'm going a little above, but, um, I just wanna talk about a couple of things that may be on your mind as well. Um, once again, you know, these are, uh, market-rate apartments, but, you know, so I've read some things that, you know, these are high-end, which in my, my view things means they won't be attainable, and that's not, that's not true. Um, people will ask, well, isn't this a drain on the schools? You know, people are gonna be moving in here, they're gonna have little kids, and, you know, it's, we're gonna need to hire, you know, thirty more teachers. Well, generally, um, folks moving into buildings like this won't have school-aged children. Once they have school-aged children, they're gonna need more space and a different type of living environment, and hopefully then they can stay in your community and buy a single-family house. Um, and that's just generally the way it is. Another issue is brought up is people are concerned that, um, you know, after we're done with this building, after three or four or five years, that it's all, it's gonna turn into, um, section, uh, just low-income housing and things like that. turn into um, uh, section, uh, just low-income housing and things like that. Um, that's not a uh, fathomable concern, I guess, because um, you know, a couple things, we would have to charge tremendously less rents, which means we won't meet our debt service. The other thing of, of, of more importance is um, if somebody gets a check from the feds or the states, because they're only making so many dollars, okay? You know, generally, th- those people are not making a lot of money, okay? You know, maybe twenty thousand dollars a year, you know, for example, or things like that. So the money that they get from the governmental agencies won't be enough to cover rents that we charge, 'cause they're fair market value. So I, um, and if you need a little further explanation on that, you know, I can, um, I can go over, you know, I mean, basically, you know, i- if, once again, if two-bedroom apartments are twelve or thirteen hundred dollars a month, um, their allocation may only be seven hundred dollars a month. And you know, I've seen this um, time and time again, where um, in, in places where we've had to do a certain percentage of um, what I call affordable units, um, which um, every city's different, and um, sometimes you have to, because that's, you know, the, the law and like, um, uh, those folks just can't afford it, and the, and the housing authorities won't let them spend more than X dollars of their income. So if anybody's concerned about um, about that, not that there's anything wrong with that, um, I think, um, hopefully I've cured your uh, or addressed your concerns. Um, you know, another thing is, of course, you say, well, you know, we'll just wait for another developer to come in to do something, okay? I think the time is right, right now, for Edgefield to take on this project along with us. Um, you know, it's been sitting for years and years and years, construction costs are starting to go through the roof, um, and um, you know, uh, good for all of us, salaries are also going up. Um, but um, you know, I've seen it too many times where people wait and wait and wait, and you know, you get behind the eight ball, and um, things are worse if you wait. I can, you know, after this, I can, you know, discuss if you wanna talk about a timeline or anything, um, I'd be glad to discuss that, but I think I've probably gone over my five minutes. So, and I didn't yawn.
Um, let me just go ahead and, and uh, open it up to counsel to ask some questions first, and then we'll call on people to come up to the podium, but, but for you two guys, uh, let me just start by asking uh, and a question, because what's before counsel is extending this tax incentive from a, a year eleven to year twenty. That's what's before counsel. So I just wanted to hear what the answer is if counsel does not approve that tonight.
Thank you. Um, I will, I can answer that question. Uh, first of all, good evening, everyone, and thanks for having us here. I'm very excited to be here, and this is one of the very few communities that I've seen so many people showing up on such a um, challenged weather day, if I can say it, to, to show interest in the community, which is very important for developers like us to come and do something productive here. Um, the uh, projects like this involve significant amount of capital outlay, and um, what we do is, like my partner explained, I calculate the cost of construction, you calculate other costs that are necessary to make the project happen, you decide a timeline, and then go about arranging the sources or the layers of funds that is necessary to complete the project. And um, there are government programs that provide debt for this, um, and they are typically uh, having amortization period of forty years and plus. And we all have homes, most of us do, we go for thirty-year financing, most of us, and, 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 um, and, and, um, the, the, the point that I'm coming to make is that um, you go and try to leverage your project and try to arrange the financing by going for um, the uh, the commitment, even if it is for a longer period for developers like us, the commitment is something that the project can handle from its income. And in our, in this project, we have taken a plan to go for uh, a, a borrowed debt that might be forty-plus years, and then we, we are um, leveraging on the federal historic tax credits, where the commitment from the developer to the investor who invest in that tax credit to make the project happen, um, is seven-plus years. Um, and there is also this state tax, historic tax credit, which is layered in this financing, where a similar amount of time has to be committed to those investors. And then um, when, when you do all this, you come up with a um, yeah, a, a commitment that you have to pay towards this on a monthly basis, and then you take the income and you take the net operating income after the expenses, and then you calculate, can this net operating income service that commitment that the developer has made? And what I'm explaining to you is done all around the country, that you end up with a gap, and today we are here to ask you to support that gap. And our commitment is, like I said, a debt that has to be paid over forty-plus years, a um, yeah, a guarantee that has to be given to the tax credit investor that is seven-plus years. In that uh, environment, plus the environment that we are all in of raising interest rates, um, the uh, the economy is being um, questioned every day in terms of whether it is viable. In this situation, what we are here is for to, for this community to fill the gap, and one way that it is done all around the country is through the property tax support. And um, the, 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 the amount of years, twenty years, may seem like a long period, but if you look at the other side of the equation, that the developer is arranging other longer-term financing and commitments and guarantees, that this will be a good investment for this community to um, commit, because you have, uh, in result, in two, three years, you will have an economic engine, like my partner pointed out, that'll be ready to operate, it'll be um, the most sustainable act that the community does, um, the fair market value of the properties around will increase, the other economic benefits of this project will start to accrue long before the twenty years, in terms of uh, jobs, the taxes that people pay, the other economic activities like sales tax and other activities that come, um, everything will add benefits to the community, and um, the amount of the twenty years will be a good investment. I know it's a commitment, but then if you look at the benefit that passed the twenty years, there are so many decades of useful life to this building. Right now, this building, like my partner pointed out, uh, has, ha- has been vacant for twenty years, not doing anything, but by making this investment, in two, three years, you will create an economic engine that creates a revenue, that creates a benefit, that creates a job for many decades to come. And that is the plan that we have come. And again, I want to point, reiterate, before I finish my talk, is that what we have found is that we need this gap to be filled, so that we can complete this project and result in an economic engine that will not only be beneficial in the long run, but also it'll create other um, activities that, um, that will result in a very long-term benefit to the community. Thank you.
So let me ask a follow-up question. Don't disagree with anything you said, it's a very important project, um, a lot of benefits down the road, but if we don't approve the extra time, what I heard was you're not gonna be able to do this project?
That's correct. Uh, like I was explaining, that this is the gap but for which the project cannot start, because you have uh, uh, the underwriting process, any lender or investor who looks at this project will see whether Guru and Dave would be able to complete this project and be sustainable and not result in a, a project that failed. And we have to make it, we have to give it the impetus that is necessary to be successful, and, and therefore, after the twenty years, and like I said, during the twenty years, there will be other economic activities that will benefit the community, and then after the twenty years, this building itself will, for several decades to follow, will result at, at, at the, at the fair market value at that time, will be starting to generate property taxes, which um, which, which is a major uh, revenue generator for this, this community.
May I ask counsel, any questions that you have?
Yes. Um, Mr. Dave, Guru, that was, just gives students a pronouncing name wrong. Oh, okay, so you, okay, I, I'm looking at, suppose that you sent, you stated that you were asking for the same consideration as Aiken County recently gave to the Warren Mill investor, right? What did Aiken County give Warren Mill investors?
Are you asking, um, I think, uh, um, yeah.
Aiken County proved the redevelopment of the Warren Mill in Warrenville, and I believe what they agreed to was that the assessed value for a ten-year period would be X, and then the assessed value for the second ten-year period would be double X, two X. So it'd be, I forgot what the exact number was of the tax benefit, it was basically years one through ten would be based on the assessment, and then they would double the assessment years eleven through twenty. Now, the state law, there's some question whether that can be done, and we are, I'm researching that matter right now, along with the Aiken County attorney.
Okay, all right. And my second question is, you, you, um, you want to put a hundred and twenty rental apartments at the killer mill, at what cost? That's a thousand dollars a month, am I right? Okay, so what would be the cost?
Okay, it's, um, can you hear me now? Actually, it's not a hundred and twenty, um, right now, um, it's about a hundred and five, and, and we think, um, it's gonna go down, 'cause we're still, you know, um, going through design, design development, um, but as far as, um, is, i- is your question rental amounts or for apartments, or are you, is your question about total cost for the project?
Not the total cost for the project. So if I want to buy, if I want to, what am I, buy an apartment or rent an apartment?
Okay, you're renting an apartment.
And what a month?
One bedrooms generally will be between, you know, nine fifty and ten fifty, you know, plus utilities per month, two bedrooms, you know, between twelve and thirteen hundred, depending on the size, and three bedrooms, fourteen to fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, so here's, here's my thing, because I do work in the school system, and I, and I heard what you said at the beginning, many people ask you about more teacher, more classroom, this and that, I would, I would have asked that question, but since you answered. Here's my thing, in the next two years, and you cannot rent, just so you got a hundred, and you cannot rent out but five at this cost, who in Ashville County gonna rent these apartment, I mean, do you have plans of people that gonna rent these apartments? That's what, that, I guess I wanna ask that question first.
Okay, well, we, we've done a, it, we've done an independent market study, um, by a very respected uh, um, market study company called our Real Property Research Group that does work across the country, and um, they did their own analysis, and um, it came up very positive, um, which was great, um, it, it, there is a huge, very big market for fair market value properties like this. Um, they also did a, another analysis for another project, I think it was in North Carolina, which names I won't bring up, um, that the developer wanted to do fair market value, and um, you, it came up that there was not a market, you know, you know, for that. So this was a, was again, a well-respected agency that does reports for, you know, HUD and things like that, USDA, and, or just regular, you know, lenders like US Bank, and um, uh, it, it came up, you know, positive, and we'll be glad to share that with you as well.
Uh, just to continue what my partner said, the, this is, uh, the, these numbers were derived from your market study, and uh, oftentimes, we have seen in other communities where we have developed, that at the point of time we start the construction, the rents may not be there, but then, when you do, when you develop a, a, a community with, where there is, uh, ten, tenants can have good experience, people do move into that community, and that's how you improve the value in the community. And then those rents can be achieved, because um, people who can, um, uh, these days, people work from home, they're a hybrid work system, so they will choose to move into this community and live because the experience is good, the community is good, friendly, and that's how we need to create value in the community.
Okay, I, I, okay, I also noticed that you said one percent tax relief, relief for the first ten years, and additional, and at least a fifth percent tax relief for the, for the years eleven through twenty. Just living in Ashville County fifty-five years plus, we're still gonna get taxed, am I right? Would tax, would tax go up for the citizen?
Um, let me explain, try to explain if I understood your question right.
Okay.
We are doing the construction and we are creating this um, property, you, right now, this property is not generating any tax revenue, you will see the same condition continue, the, 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 the existing properties will continue to pay taxes, the existing property, uh, the citizens will continue to pay taxes, but what we are saying is that we'll build it, you don't-
You guys' taxes will be frozen, all right?
Yeah, frozen, and then from the twenty-first year, we will start to pay, um, the community will see a, a huge jump in the property taxes, but for the first twenty, you don't see any difference what you saw in the last twenty versus the next twenty, because um, the, the, right now, the property taxes are none, and what we are saying is that, we, um, I should correct myself, though, we are uh, freezing, we are, we are attributing a value at which we are buying, and then freezing it, and if my um, approximate calculations, discussions um, i- i- is right, it's going to be about thirty-six thousand dollars a month that we are gonna be paying. Uh, I'm sorry, a year, my apologies, yeah, a year, uh, that we are gonna be paying.
So I have two quick questions. One, how did you decide to invest in Edgefield? And then followed up, you know, we're living in a unique time period in our history with work, labor force, and economics. What is your realistic timeframe for completion?
Okay, so there's, there's two questions, and I'd be glad to go over his timeframe. Um, I bring in most of the, um, you know, developments, you know, through the door. Um, so I'm on the phone and on the computers, you know, sometimes an hour a day, sometimes, you know, three hours a day or four days. So I, 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 I speak to um, cities, brokers throughout, you know, the country, and um, I uh, you know, I found this mill, at first, I looked at it and I said, um, look at the windows, um, and it looked like it was in intuitive shape, so I said to myself, there's gotta be something wrong. Um, un- unfortunately, when I was there today, you know, windows are great, but they have to come out, because you can't open them, and it's a little harsh to have a two-and-a-half story building with unoperable windows. Um, but um, in any event, at least it was well taken care of, um, there's, you know, no water coming to the roof. Um, but as I got more into it, um, uh, obviously, um, about the same time we were interested in, you know, other jobs came through like Generac, you know, and, and the like, um, and I found out, you know, obviously, it's about a half-hour away from Augusta, which is a huge cyber, you know, community, I think there's a, there's a army base up there, what is it, Fort um-
Fort Gordon.
Fort Gordon, and you know, we all know that, you know, cybersecurity concerns are going no place, you know, except up, and um, you know, the entire state of South Carolina is just, you know, people are flocking to it, and I don't have to tell you that, um, you know, it's a nice- Um, you know, it's a nice place to be, community, weather's great, people are nice, you know, and the like. Um, timetable, without getting really too technical. Hopefully, there'll be a third reading and there's some time, you know, in early May, okay? Um, we've already gotten the building on the National Register, which was, you know, of paramount importance. Eventually, um, so we will start on design development drawings, you know, modifying and, and then fine tuning the drawings that the, uh, units that we showed you today to make sure, you know, if we should make them a little bigger, a little smaller, you know, wha- whatever. Drawings, and our architect is, uh, here, James Maynard, if there's any questions. Um, you know, drawings could take, you know, six, seven months. At the same time, you know, before they're finalized, we've gotta get permission, um, from the State Historic Preservation Office, which we call SHPO. So they make sure that we follow the guidelines, uh, provided and, uh, regulated, you know, by rules that the feds put out to be, you know, very simple. And then, um, after that's done, then they send it to Washington, and then that gets approved. And, um, you know, our architect has got, um, expertise in that, and Guru and I have expertise in that. So, you know, we're not shooting the dark of what we think is gonna get approved. Um, this is a loft building, so, um, things are a little more, what's the word? If, if it was a, if it was a, a hotel or an office building that wasn't gutted or things like that, you'd have a lot more rules that could be a little iffy, subject to interpretation. With a loft building like this, it's a lot easier to send things into the state and local and the federal authorities to get it approved. So, uh, then we'll get a bid out. So hopefully, you know, e- either construction, depending on weather, can start, you know, sometime later this year, or by first quarter of, of next year.
And, and we have the experience, we have done this before. So what, uh, Mr. Dubin said is, based on prior experiences of making these projects happen. While, while those, uh, architectural plans, design approvals happen at the same time. Um, a, a, as the CFO, I will be, um, arranging for the financing and, uh, everything happens around the same time. And we typically do them as a, as, uh, the fastest way that we could potentially do them. And, and like my partner said, um, we are looking at your construction chart of either the last quarter of this year or the first quarter of next year.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of things, mostly direct to these guys and commit to y'all, so not go anywhere. Um, first of all, let me clarify, we didn't do a hundred percent tax relief for the first ten years, correct? I wanna clarify that.
Our current ordinance states that taxes would be based on the current appraised or market value of the property. So if the property is valued at a million dollars, then for the next ten years, and let's say they, uh, put twenty million dollars into construction, for the next ten years, instead of being valued at, or assessed at twenty million, it'd be assessed at one million. That's what our current ordinance states. State law is what we are looking into, indicates that we could, not indicates, but states that you could do this for twenty years. But it does not have anything in the regulations that allow us to increase the valuation of the property.
Okay, so that was my second thing, because the first time we heard this, we were going to reassess after the initial ten years. And I just want people to know, because I've spoken to some people about this, and that's what I led them to believe as well, so I don't wanna think y'all...
However...
I didn't lie to y'all, that's what we were told.
So we, we had originally, based on talking to, uh, these gentlemen, had stated to you that it would be double the assessed value for the last ten years. This was based on information that we received from Aiken County. We are right now in contact with Aiken County as to how they were able to enact this. We believe that there is the potential for, uh, redevelopment agreement, that we might be able to work out with the developers. That is not associated with this ordinance. The ordinance would state twenty years based on the market value of the property. The redevelopment agreement may include some other language that we could work with the developer on determining how best the property could be assessed, or what the taxes would be in future years. That's something would have to be...
We might get an MOU with them later.
And that would come back to you as a resolution, uh, not as a change to the ordinance.
So at this point, though, we are looking at not reassessing?
Based on state law.
Based on state...
That option.
Okay. So we're just saying Aiken County is breaking the law, basically?
I'm not going to say that.
Well, I mean, they either are or they're not, I'm just saying.
I'm, I'm not going to say that, but my assessment of the code is slightly different. And I've asked them where they came up with their assessment, and we're still discussing the matter.
So we're gonna...
Okay.
We're gonna work, we're gonna work with, um, the city and the county, you know, on this, so, um, everyone's put in a favorable light.
So you're, you're willing to negotiate if I, if I could say that, okay?
And a lot of times, things are done through redevelopments agreements, typically with the, the city anyway. Um, uh, with not including, you know, density and things, you know, and things like that. So, um, it's not very unusual that there's additional terms in that as well.
Again, if I may add one thing, we have, uh, it's such a credible record. We have negotiated such redevelopment agreements with the City of Chicago, um, with the City of Duluth in Minnesota, and, and, uh, City of Peoria in Illinois. We have experience, and we are definitely willing to work and, 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 and complete this successfully.
Let me ask...
Of course, we give you copies, you know, so you can, um, why reinvent the wheel if you don't have to?
And I would also, this one's for you guys, so I would be interested to know, will you be lo- using local contractors? Will you be using local workforce for this, or will you be bringing in people?
Well, we'll be hiring a general contractor from around the, around the area. Um, that would be up to, to them to, you know, get the, um, subcontractors.
So in your other projects, are you typically, um...
Yes.
Mindful of trying to use local people?
Yes, I mean, all things being equal, you know, sure.
Yes.
Can you come to the microphone so we get you on tape?
Sorry.
State your name, state your name again, too, please.
Uh, my name is, uh, James Maynard with, uh, Red Clay Design out of, uh, Charlotte. And, uh, I've actually done a lot of these historic adaptive reuse projects. And, um, I actually, uh, got introduced to, uh, David and Guru through the contractor. And I just wanted to add that he, uh, nearly always uses local contractor pools. Like, he's out of Winston-Salem, but he doesn't bring guys from Winston-Salem down, just because realistically, you're going to usually get better labor at a cheaper cost if you're not bringing guys in and having to put them up in places to stay in and all of that, so. I was just trying to help him answer that question.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I mean, that, that actually is, is, is pretty typical, you know, um, um, it's subject to, obviously, they have to have the, uh, enough workforce to handle, you know, the project. And besides expertise, um, subcontractor, um, tradespersons are not gonna drive two hours, um, to, you know, a day, you know, four hours a day to work on this project, it's just not, you know, realistic. I don't know if they would be coming directly here, or, you know, in Aiken, or it depends where they're located, you know?
Thank you.
Especially at the price of gas.
All right, so, counsel, you know the questions at the moment, we can ask questions later, too, but if everybody's good right now. All right, so I'm gonna open up the public hearing, and what I need for one of you to do is put your microphone back in that little slot right there. But, hang on, hang on, Doc. So I want you to hang on to that one. And if I can ask both of you who wouldn't mind sitting in those two chairs right there in the front, because some people may not have questions, so you can just listen. But some people may have questions, I want you available to hop up and answer questions if you could. So if we, if we can go that route. And, um, if it's okay, I'm just gonna use this list as a starting point. And then once I get through it, then anybody else who wants to speak is, is fine, since this, these people signed up to speak it, you know, as we went through earlier. So I'll just go through that. So if you don't want to speak, because now your questions have been answered, that's fine. Uh, if you still wanna speak, then come up to the microphone and speak, and I'm just gonna take them in this order. So Summers Pandarvis, you wanna, you still wanna speak?
Evening, everyone, Summers Pandarvis, I'm gonna try to be very brief, I'm timed myself. Um, so first off, I am the real estate agent involved, or one of the real estate agents involved. They do have their own representation, they're from a firm out of Greenville. Um, just wanna reiterate several things I touched on. Um, one thing I do wanna make sure everybody understands is that currently, it's owned by a nonprofit. We get zero taxes, period. So, we're not losing anything, we're actually gonna gain, not a whole lot at first, because at a million-dollar rate, he said thirty-seven, I heard forty-four when I called about it. Or twenty-two thousand a year, which over twenty-year period would be four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Which isn't anything to sneeze at, but it's not what it would be assessed at once it's remodeled. Um, so any money's better than no money. I have tried to sell this mill on my entire real estate career, this will be my second time doing it. The current owners have no interest in, for, for working on it, developing it. You know, it can be a, an empty spot in our town, or it can bring something to our community. And I think a bird in hand is better than two in the bush, you know, we, it's a miracle we have them, and I don't want them to go anywhere. Um, so I think that's important to know, is that we'll be getting less taxes than we would, but something's better than nothing. So, yeah, basically, taxes, we will be getting them, and I think it's, if it's necessary to get the deal done, I think we need to look at the broader goals for the community. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Kathy Ecker?
I'm Kathy Eckery, Sandy Springs Road, Trenan. Um, I presented my questions and concerns last month, so I do appreciate the response. You got the people involved down here, so that's great. So, are these efficiency apartments? What are they?
Use the microphone, please.
Hi, can everybody hear me? Okay. Um, right now, based upon our market study, um, uh, we've got, um, approximately seventy-seven two-bedrooms, you know, plus loft area. About twenty-five, um, one-bedrooms and a half dozen threes. Uh, we're looking, we wanna talk to our market study folks about possibly, um, making either some of the two-bedrooms a little larger, or make them two, two-bedrooms plus dens. But there's no effec- efficiencies or studios.
All right, what's the square footage for the one-bedroom?
Uh, one-bedrooms are between six hundred and fifty to seven hundred and fifty.
And I'm assuming the bigger, the more square footage. Um, on the, uh, federal preservation, uh, tax credit, how did you get around the stipulation for moderate to low-income housing?
Uh, it's, it's not required.
According to my research, it's a stipulation.
If I can explain it. Um, if you're taking the, um, low-income housing tax credit, then you have to abide by the moderate and low-income restrictions in order to get the federal credit. That is typically called in our world as LITAC, a low-income housing tax credit. But what we are doing here is not LITAC, we are doing federal historic tax credits, which can be taken for affordable housing, as well as market-rate unrestricted housing, and, which is what we are doing. So to answer your question, we, we are taking the federal historic tax credits, which can be taken on market-rate units. And that is usually followed in a, in a state like South Carolina, by the state historic tax credit as well.
So you are saying that you're going with moderate to lower-income housing, but you're not going to be calling it, um, Section 8?
No, that's not what I said.
Well, it was presented as high-income housing, but the federal preservation tax credit stipulates that you're not eligible in order to develop that way.
Now, let me explain it, uh, one more time for you. This is a project where there is no income restrictions. We call them unrestricted rents. This is a market-rate rent project, where we won't be looking at the salaries, whether it is low, so that the person can afford, uh, uh, can be subsidized to live here. In fact, it'll be the opposite, it is an unrestricted, they, we will check for the mere economics of whether they can pay the monthly rents. And therefore, uh, I want you to clearly understand that there is no subsidy here, there's no subsidized rent. This is a, um, unrestricted market-rate project, where, um, they, they come and look at an apartment, we tell them the rents. If they like it, if their incomes can afford, they will, they will, uh, sign up the lease and, and, and live there.
When the project is completed, are you going to remain owners, or are you selling it?
We will have to, first of all, in a project like this, we will have to, um, not disrupt the ownership for the first period of five years, after the building is placed in service. Well, let's talk about placed in service, which is a technical term. It normally takes about two to two-and-a-half years to place it in service, from the time you start construction. You, you start letting people in, the tenants start to come, usually from the twelfth month. And then the building stabilizes by two to two-and-a-half years, and then you have the five years. And, 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 and therefore, uh, our commitment wi- uh, will be there for, uh, by law, it is there for that minimum period of seven to seven-and-a-half years. But practically speaking, these prop, these projects have to be held for, um, for a much longer period of time than that. In order to show any value, um, our typical experi- uh, historic, um, experience has been to hold on, hold on for a longer term. One of the pictures that, uh, Mr. David Dubin showed up there called Shoemaker Labs in Chicago, we finished it in two thousand six or seven, and we are still holding on to it. Our history has been to hold on to them for longer, we are not short-term folks, we are here to build value for longer term. And one last thing, um, when we negotiate the redevelopment agreement, those are things that we can always negotiate with the city to make a longer-term commitment.
Will it, it will be in writing?
Will it be what?
Your commitment will be in writing, it will be a contract?
Of course, a redeva...
You're not gonna sell it as soon as you get through?
No, we can't, like I said, for...
Five years, you said.
Yeah, five, five plus the construction period.
But you want us to, um, reduce the tax base for twenty years? And you're gonna amortize with the federal tax credit for forty-plus years?
Uh, the, uh, the federal debt for forty-plus years, and the federal historic tax credit, and the state historic tax credit for se- about seven years.
Seven years. All right, that was that, did that answer your, your question?
Yes.
Let's see, next is Ken Durham.
I'm Ken Durham, um, if you'd have let me speak before seven, I would've said I'm mayor, but I don't know how the results came out because I... They're counting votes now, so, we'll see. So regardless, whether I'm mayor or I'm a citizen, um, I strongly urge you to consider this. Um, a lot of good questions, I had the same questions a year ago on conference calls, you guys. Um, a lot of the same concerns I had. A few facts, we're getting no taxes now. It will be taxed on whatever the rate is, a million dollars, yes, for the next ten years, maybe double for the following ten, maybe the same for the following ten. But you will get taxes on cars. Um, you will have an additional two-hundred-plus people living in walking distance of the downtown Edgefield. You will have those people using existing restaurants, new, new investments into town. There will be other businesses that are taxed that will come with these people, okay? Um, in, in my opinion, it's a no-brainer. I mean, I, 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 that's, maybe I'm biased, I'll admit it. Um, I see a lot... Um, I see a lot, um, in benefit with this, and I really don't see any downside. My biggest concern, I hear some smirks behind me, which is fine, but my biggest concern is I've been dealing with this building for a long time. My phone is usually the first one to ring if somebody wants to invest in the town. I have had few, if any, phone calls interested in this seventy-thousand-square-foot historic building, okay? I know the condition of the roof, because I was on it when I worked with the National Wild Turkey Federation four or five years ago. The roof has outlived its lifespan already. Water will be going into the building. My biggest fear is if something's not done, okay? Five years from now, we're gonna be, they're gonna sell this building for brick, the old brick, and the terrific wood that's in it, okay? And we're gonna be left with a mosquito hole about eight feet deep on that entire property. They're gonna tear it down and leave a hole there, because nobody's gonna spend a half-million-plus dollars to put a roof on it, unless we get someone that's got the vision to see where this town and this county can go in the next ten years. And thank you, guys. So, that's it. Thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, Rich Oster.
I'm Rick Oster, Hot Water Drive, Edgefield. Um, I think the project is great. I think it's a beautiful property, and I think getting more homes around town is a laudable goal. That being said, I'm a little troubled by the fact that we're literally talking about changing a law to facilitate a business plan for a private company that's not profitable without support from taxpayers, county government, however we wanna phrase that. I'm sure there are businesses and potential businesses in this community that would like to take a business plan that was borderline, bring it to council, and say, "I need your help to make this work." And that's basically what we're doing here. Now, trade-offs. I hear a lot of soft language. We'll have economic engines and economic drivers, and we're gonna have businesses rushing to come in. I hope that's all true, but I think if we're gonna talk about giving special dispensation to a private, for-profit company that amounts to millions of dollars, we need to see some hard facts. We need to see cost-benefit. We need to know for better, lack of a better term, what our return on investment is. What are we getting for potentially giving up millions of dollars in, in tax benefits? Um, I think it's important. It's, it's the people's, county is the people's money. And again, this is, this is special dispensation that's not going to be afforded to, to regular business owners here in the county. So I think if we're gonna proceed with this, it would be great to have hard, detailed numbers and projections based on something in fact, not just supposition, so that people in the county can say, "Yeah, I, I support this," or "I don't," and know why. If that information's out there, I haven't seen it yet. If you guys have it, release it to us. Let us look. Um, you might find more support than you think. Thank you.
I want to point out-
I can address that if you, if you'd like. Well, thank you for your, uh, your, your comments. I appreciate it, okay? Um, you know, a couple of things. Um, you, regarding a cost-benefit, you know, analysis, well, let me actually go to the, um, the last thing. Um, it's really not like we're starting a restaurant, which is a very, very difficult business, um, so I've been told. Um, rental properties like this, as, as I mentioned earlier, um, ninety-nine percent of the time throughout the country, especially in, 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 in smaller communities, um, it's the norm that, um, whatever you call a tax abatement, a pilot program, tax increment financing, um, whatever, um, is for twenty years. Most of the places that we go, it's probably like twenty-five years. And I'm just gonna break it down to the very simplistic formula, okay? Um, market studies are important, as I mentioned earlier, okay? Um, based upon market studies, you can only get X dollars for an apartment, okay? If the taxes are at a higher value, that means you either have to charge more for an apartment, and a market study has got to substantiate that, okay? Um, or more cash, for lack of a better word, have gotta be put in the property. Um, so if rents stay the same, and someone has, and our investment group has to put in substantially more cash to make, you know, the debt service payments and the like, the return on equity is not gonna be worth the risk. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, very simply, you know, um, would you invest in something at a, I don't know what the interest rates are at the bank right now, but, you know, one-and-a-half percent with zero risk? Um, or, um, would it make a difference if it was, you know, two-and-a-half percent, um, with the risk is subs, you know, subsidy greater, you know? Um, you know, it's all about, you know, dollars and cents for the, for the investor group. And, um, it, um, it, you know, if it, if, um, you don't have, you know, these entitlements and things like that, then, you know, projects don't get done. And I think, um, because of the recent job growth, uh, like Generic and the like that has, that have, you know, been brought to light and, and come to Edgefield and other communities, and, um, and the other employers, that gives us the, um, inclination that we think we'd like this town to develop in. But, um, you know, uh, um, so does that, does that hopefully answer your, your question? So it's, oh, finally, it's not really a matter of cost-benefit in like, you know, if we, you know, if, if we're not able to put this deal together, then this, you know, you know, there will be zero tax dollars, because National Wild, National Turkey Federation, you know, I don't know what their business plan would be, but either it'll sit for another, you know, several years generating zero, um, or deteriorate. And, um, you know, and it, it is true, as the mayor said, that, um, I know a building in North Carolina, um, that, um, was eligible for some very good tax benefits, and, um, the owner decided just to tear it down and sell off the heavy timbers and everything like that, which I wish he wouldn't, but, um, or hadn't, but, um, that's a realistic, um, scenario as, as well that I've seen. So I, I hope that answers your, your question. Um, well, can I, what did I?
You have to come back to the podium next, the dancers.
So, we talk about these terms like economic drivers, and your property values will go up, and, and that all sounds nice. It's, it's a good pitch. I'd like to see something that approached hard facts and analysis, either what you've done in other places, or a fact-based analysis to say, "Yeah, you guys are gonna give up potentially millions of dollars to make sure that your company is profitable in this endeavor. What is our return on investment as a community, as taxpayers?" And it may be there, and, and that's cool, but, but I don't think we've sort of gotten that information yet.
But there won't be a return investment, because-
That's, that's, but you're not answering the question. You see, you're, you're sort of holding hostage. Will you either get nothing or you get this?
No, 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 I don't, I don't mean to be doing that. I'm just, I'm just being honest with you.
But you've gone in this direction twice. You've said, "Well, either you can have nothing, or you can have this." What I'm asking is, if you guys have expertise in this, and you've been successful, give us some information. Show us. Show us what it did to the community. Show us what the impact was. I, I don't think that's unreasonable.
If I can, if I can try to answer your concern, uh, situations like this, um, typically, I have seen, and we have done this in our company and other projects, and we'll definitely, um, work with the city, county, and internally within the ownership and finance team, is you normally do a implant study, uh, uh, which will come out and give this community an answer as to, if this project goes forward, what can we expect in terms of the number of jobs, the, uh, amount of tax dollars that you'll generate, other than the property tax dollars? We have done this before, and, and those kind of studies can be done. Uh, if you, if you, if you see the environment we are in now, we are just coming to get, mobilizing the support and, and the project feasibility. Uh, we have completed the market study just very recently. We can definitely do an economic implant study to try and get that, uh, um, it is not quite called an ROI, but it'll-
I said for lack of a-
Yeah, yeah. It will definitely give you the information that you are looking for as to what the benefits of the community. And one little thing I want to add is also the fact that, right now, um, and, and again, I'm not holding hostage, but it's a reality that there is no, uh, there is nothing to lose right now, because there is zero taxes. We are, um, like Summers said, we are adding to the tax base, and, 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 and for the first twenty years, it's going to be lower. The, the community, in my opinion, is not investing. They are just staying put, because to let this project thrive, and to let this project generate sufficient income so that in the twenty-first year, it'll be commercially feasible for it to give many, 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 many more dollars. And so it is not yet right, check that you're writing every year. You are, you are just waiting for the twenty-first year to come so that you can get a much higher return for it.
And I, I, I clearly understand what you're saying conceptually, okay? I get that. What I'm saying is, there are a lot of other businesses in this town that would love to do just like you guys. Come up with a business plan and say, "I fall this much short. I need the county to float it." Make it up. That, that's, that's what we get down to. That's the gist of it. If you're going to ask for that, and you want the rest of us to support it, give us some valid information. That, that's, that's basically all I'm saying. And if it's there, then that's great. People can digest it, they can, they can get the gestalt of it and decide whether they wanna support it or not. The, the feeling that you come in and you say, "I'm a for-profit business. Here's my business plan. It only works if I get tax breaks that other people don't get." If you leave it at that, you're not showing us where, where our investment is. And, and so if you have the capability to do that, I think that's great. I think it'd be good for people to see.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, if I can add one last sentence, we, we have done implant studies, which exactly talks about, um, the impact of your project. I'm using a technical word, but basically, it's an impact of your project in the community. We have done those studies before. They, uh, they are not time-consuming studies. We can definitely try and answer that question. And, and, and I, I also want to set the expectation that it'll set the number of jobs it's gonna create. It's going to, um, over the next forty, fifty years, what is the tax dollars that it'll generate? Those kind of estimates that it'll, it'll create. If, if, uh, if the folks in here want that, we can definitely undertake that responsibility.
We're just not sure about ti, you know, timing.
Right.
It, it's an independent party that is doing it.
So this is probably a good time for me to interject one thing to make sure everybody's on the same page. So this isn't a project that was brought to the county, and they said, "Here's what we wanna do," and we crafted some ordinance to fit this business plan. Probably three years ago, maybe four, I'll lose track of time. Um, the council passed an ordinance that was based on state law called the Bailey Bill. We adopted the Bailey Bill in the hopes that people would renovate historic businesses. And we adopted it as it was written, which is twenty years. Except, we chose to make it ten years, but the Bailey Bill allows twenty. We just didn't adopt that part of it. It's the only part we didn't adopt. We just thought it was more prudent. We didn't think we'd have a project this large. And also, the Bailey Bill has also been used at the, uh, bank across the street for that renovation. They didn't come to us and say, "Here's a plan. Why don't you pass this bill?" So this bill is in place, and it is a very, very narrow business. So what I mean is, if anybody comes to us and wants to spend a million dollars on a historic building, we'll give them the exact same tax breaks we're giving them. That's all it takes. So it's not like we're just handing out these things. I wanna make sure people understood that, understand that this is a very, very specific thing authorized by state law.
Mr. Chairman, may-
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry.
And it could also be applied to historic homes as well, correct?
Yes, we did adopt for homes later, too.
If someone wants to purchase a historic home and do the same thing, it's available to any resident who wants to invest in any of our dilapidated structures in the county that are historic.
And for those who had a chance to speak, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna call on you again right now. I'm going down the list. So next is Charles Kemp.
Thank you for this opportunity. And I'd like to say, welcome to Edgefield County. All right. Um, I'll tell you, uh, what's going on, the, the discussion here, the, uh, the thought of something happening at Kendall Mill is exactly what I was thinking needed to happen. Hello? Um, back when we were talking about this zoning, I was saying, you know, if we need, if we need people to come to this, these people need rooftops. They need to be centered around the, uh, Johnston, Trenan, and Edgefield. That was just my opinion, instead of, you know, scattered throughout the whole county. So, uh, you know, I, I think it's a great idea. And, um, I think that the, uh, uh, the fact that I see Mr. Smith here, uh, he and his wife have Christine's, um, you know, a business like that could certainly, uh, uh, benefit. And I can just see the potential of growth. At, at one point, I was thinking, you know, somebody needs to go in and get all those houses at Kendall Mill and fix those houses up, and that, you know, these, uh, small families and, uh, young people could move into these houses. But I wasn't even thinking about the Mill. So anyway, I think that's, I think it's a great idea. Uh, at the same time, I have a dear friend who happens to be out of town, and, uh, he called me and wanted me to read a letter for him, and, which I agreed to do, and I'm gonna do it, and, um, and want you to consider what he has to say. It's a letter from Mr. John Pettigrew, and he says, "I appreciate the opportunity to have my comments read to you since I'm unable to attend in person. Spring break is this week, and my family is on a trip that we have had planned since January. Many in our community have concerns about the feasibility, desirability of a hundred and twenty rental apartments at the former Kendall Mill location in the town of Edgefield. Tonight, I wish to address proposed ordinance twenty-one, twenty-two, seventy-eight, or seventy-eight, zero, uh, which would provide the Dubin-Guru Group the opportunity for twenty years of property tax reduction totaling over nine million dollars. That represents giving up nine million dollars that could help fund the services for apartment residents and all citizens of our county. I and many others feel that it is just too much. According to my calculations, under current county law, Guru is eligible for tax saving of, of four-point-seven-five million dollars over ten years. This is in addition to other historic and federal and state credits they may obtain. However, on top of that, the developers have asked the county to change our law to provide an additional ten years of tax reduction. If you pass this ordinance, it is estimated that Guru becomes eligible for additional tax savings of four-point-four-two million dollars in the years eleven through twenty. The total estimated tax reduction for developments, for the developers would reach nine-point-one-seven million dollars over twenty years. I've heard it said that the NWTF, as a tax-exempt organization, currently pays no taxes on the former Mill building. While that may be true, no county and school services are needed today as they are no, there are no occupants in the building. Putting a hundred and twenty rental apartments in the building is a very different story. There will be school needs such as classroom space, teacher salary, buses, computers, et cetera. The county, town, and other entities will have to provide law enforcement, EMS, recreation, and other services to residents. Property taxes are necessary to help pay for this. I believe that the Guru Group should pay their fair share of property taxes under the current county law. It is wise to, is it wise to look, to lock in over nine million dollars in tax reduction for the next twenty years? Should taxes be shifted from the apartment developers to other residential and commercial taxpayers, isn't ten years enough? I urge you to carefully consider the impact on residents around our county and vote no on this special tax break. Please don't change our law just because these developers have asked you to do it. Thank you. And this concludes the comments from Mr. John Pettigrew. So I think we've heard a lot of good comments tonight, uh, pro, for, and against, and I trust that y'all will make the right decision. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi. You know, a couple of comments. Actually, I'm aware of that, a lot of things in the, in the article. Unfortunately, I think the composer of the, the letter is, you know, is wrong. The nine, I'm not sure where he came up with the $9 million figure over, you know, 20 years, but that's probably double the accurate amount. If somebody wants to discuss that, that's fine. I think I've already addressed the fact that school-aged kids won't be a drain on the system because it's our experience in the market study that people who have school-aged kids won't be living in a development such as this. And, and, and not to beat a dead horse, but the, the county isn't giving up anything because, you know, you know, once again, what we're asking for is typical in communities throughout, you know, the United States. And, you know, it, it goes back to, you know, either you have to not agree with the market study and to make it work, charge a lot more rents, which then you won't get a loan from a lender because they're not going to take the risk. Or you have to ask an investment group to make a significantly smaller return on their, on their money, which isn't going to happen, you know, isn't going to happen either. So as far as, you know, EMS, there'll be more people there. So, you know, admittedly, you know, there'll be more people, you know, just because of the, you know, Murphy's Law or, you know, chance of somebody getting hurt, you know, is greater than no one right now. But hopefully these will be generally, you know, people in decent shape. It won't be a big drain on the, you know, on the EMS, you know, system.
Okay. Next is Jake Smith.
My wife said it's a big decision. Don't want to make it on an empty stomach.
Thank you very much.
I like your wife.
All right. Come more often.
Thank you. My name is Jake Smith. My wife and I own Christine's here in town. I reside on Egg House Road in the county. I was born here, grew up here. I left to serve. I came back. I have had a career in nuclear power, which has allowed me to travel to many, many states. And I've seen many communities over my 30-year career. The reason I came here is to talk about that gift. First and foremost, I asked my wife, how many baskets of strawberries have we sold to Kendall Mill residents? And I was surprised, the number was zero. So as far as talking about economic development and addressing what it's going to do for the community, that's directly what it's going to do for the community. The construction workers that are going to come to the community to build it are going to eat in our restaurant and I pay taxes. And the only concession I'm asking for is that you guys will come join us and have a slice of pie afterwards. Because it, you know, it's really, it's kind of a no-brainer as far as we are not getting anything. And when you look at some simple economic indicators, Consumer Price Index was 8.6% last year. It's not getting any cheaper doing business. That means interest rates are going up to control inflation. These folks are not going to be able to cut many deals in the future and we already haven't had many opportunities. If you look at this, the decision would have been made 20 years ago, we would have already been reaping the benefit. And I don't think we're going to get another chance. The age of the building is just not going to dictate that there's opportunities going forward. And so, you know, really what I'm summarizing is this is a gift, just like that basket of strawberries. And don't look at the gift with skepticism. Look at it as an opportunity. That's really what it is. It's an opportunity for us as a community to really reach out, come together, bring more people here and help rise up. That's really what it's about. And I can tell you, as a business owner, a basket of strawberries wasn't for sale a year ago. Neither was the strawberry shortcake or any of the other things to go with it. And sometimes change can be sweet. It can be very apropos and it can be very unexpected. I would ask the council to consider that and think about the future for Edgefield. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So that completes the list, but as I said, once we get through the list, we would ask who else wants to speak. So at this point, I'll recognize individuals from the audience. If you will raise your hand and you can come up and speak if you'd like to talk. Mr. Thornton. When you come up, please introduce yourself, each of you.
My name is George Thornton. I'm a resident of Edgefield County. I'd like to echo Mr. Smith's comments. And I've been involved with the mill for over 10 years. I was responsible for the Turkey Federation. We bought it and it had been vacant for 10 years. And there had been no interest at all, anybody else purchasing it. We actually, we were able to use our not-for-profit status to give a tax break to the selling company that allowed us to purchase it at a very favorable price, which has now put this building in a place where it can be turned and the vision for having residences there can be completed. That would not have happened without government assistance. Historic tax credits, conservation tax credits, state tax credits generally come out of a recognition by Congress and by legislatures that public-private partnerships are sometimes necessary for difficult business situations. And I would submit to you, this is a very, very difficult business situation. I would strongly encourage you, for the benefit of the future generations of this community, that you support the extension of the Bailey Bill. But I'd also like to point out, with some strength of voice, my disappointment and the logic that's put forth about a return on investment for the county. There is no return on investment for this county if we don't go through with the project. And I know from experience that, excuse me, there is not a long line of people standing out there to replace these gentlemen. And as our mayor said, we're at risk of having a hole in the ground breeding mosquitoes. So I would like for y'all to, to really consider the long-term benefit to the community of having residents come in. And I'll also add that having been a business owner here and had some very difficult times with businesses here because of lack of rooftops, I personally understand how much we need these businesses. We've had seven or eight businesses go out of, out of business in the last two or three years here because of lack of foot traffic. And if something's not done, we're, we're going to continue to have a ghost town in three towns. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Would anybody else like to speak? Yes.
Good evening. I'll try to make this pretty quick. My name is Jim Oliver. I live at 693 Curritown Road in North Augusta. As you know, I've been involved in a lot of county council and planning commission work over the past several years, especially way to the LMO. I firmly believe that where we need the high-density housing is in the towns. They have the infrastructure there, build it there and let's have less dense housing out in the county where people move to Edgefield County for a reason. They love the road. You drive Sweetwater Road back to Curritown, you go to Old McDonald's Fish Camp, you go to those areas and you come out there because you love the area that you're living in. If they can build this and it can be both a benefit to the town of Edgefield and to the citizens of the county, then I would be for it. I think that I would like to see a little bit more information from this development group. And that would go along the lines of how, how they're going to make this really work. Because I know that in, in Augusta, Georgia, they built the Enterprise Mill, which took an old cotton mill, converted it into apartments and it's still working as apartments today. I don't know how, the whole story on how that was done, whether there was tax credits on that or not. But I think this is a good concept. I like the idea of the high-density in the towns of Edgefield, Johnston and even Trenton. So let's keep the county rural the way we like it and the way everybody else loves it so that they want to enjoy the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jennifer?
So first off, I want to say, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. And I am speaking as a citizen, not as a writer for the Edgefield Advertiser. But I do have some questions. Several times tonight, we heard questions from multiple people and I feel like they weren't answered directly. How many or what percentage of your developments have become low-income? You said that you didn't have that intention, but you didn't say that it's never happened. And I just wonder if it has.
Zero of our, of our properties have turned from a market rate into, you know, a low income. As I think I mentioned before, depending on the city, some, some cities or states require, if you get breaks like this, for lack of a better word, that you have to certain, put a certain percentage in at either 60% of the average income or 50%. And those are the, you know, the rules of the game. And a lot of it's, it's either put in by, you know, local law or state law. It kind of depends.
But we have not gone to a city saying that we want to do this supportive of low-income housing, asking for benefits. We have never done that. They have come back to us and said, if we are giving this benefit to you, can you provide it? Out of your 100 apartments, 20 apartments, 50% AMI, which is, which is affordable. And, and we have, we have followed that requirement, but we have not put that as a reason to generate subsidies or support from the cities.
So some have been turned into subsidies at the, at a request?
Well, it's not turned into. When we go and start the project, we have a redevelopment agreement with the city that the city says, when you finish the project, 20% of the units have to be rented to tenants that are making affordable salaries. That is, that is what I'm referring to as we have done. We have not taken, like my partner said, we have not taken a market rate unit and converted it for any financial benefits. No.
To, to low-income housing. And, and, and as, you know, as far as I know, no one has requested that we provide any lower income housing at all.
So do y'all plan on requesting that any of this be low-income? No, okay. All right. Ms. Kenyon asked what would happen if you aren't able to rent out the apartments? And you said that studies have been done. Can you release those to us so that we can see them? Have they been released?
I'm not sure if they, they have been released, but you know, when it's finalized, we'd be glad to release it.
So we can't see it beforehand, only after?
We, we can give you, you know, we can give you a draft. I mean, you know, it's, all we have to do is press, you know, send and we can send it to, to Roger, the mayor.
I believe the question is, you did a market analysis.
Yeah, the outside company.
That's available to the public.
First of all, the market analysis is not officially complete. We have just completed and we are going through a draft discussion with them. And one thing that I want to explain to the folks here is that when we do these studies, these are done through private professionals who have intellectual property rights because we pay them. And they give the, so as my partner said, we can release it to the county or the city in some capacity and to the extent you can share you can. But the study is not complete and we will definitely be ready to, when it's complete, share it.
Well, we can, we can, we can, once again, we can find out, get permission, you know, tomorrow or the next day and get back to you as soon as possible.
Okay. So since that study's not complete, what's your plan if these apartments can't be rented out?
If I can answer the question. The, the project has to go through a lot of due diligence process. Like for example, we are working with you today. We are doing market studies. We are doing financial feasibility analysis. All these things will have to come together to a closure financially so that we'll have the money that we can locate to complete the project. So we won't be able to start the project unless we finish all this. And that's the process that the timeframe that we told you today, that we'll be going through in the next several months and completing the due diligence. Does that answer your question?
Not really, but I don't think we're going to get anywhere else.
Well, let me, let me continue. Besides our study, when you go to, you know, a national like HUD or USDA, they're also going to do their own independent market study. Because that's just, you know, that's their rules and regulations as another, you know, stopgap, you know, as well. That's why, you know, projections are done. If, if there was a problem, I think I mentioned earlier, the same company did a, a study on a, on a mill in North Carolina and the ownership group or the buyer wanted to do fair market value. And it just wasn't, it wasn't feasible. So it's, it's not in any, it's not in anybody's interest, best interest for the market study who, people who've got a national reputation or, you know, the lender like HUD or the tax credit investors, which typically large banks, because they're going to also do their own studies and everybody to be wrong. So I mean, you know, is it an ironclad guarantee, 110%? Well, I can tell you, there's only one guarantee that I know of in life. And, you know, once again, I'm sorry for your, for your, for your loss. But, you know, we've been doing this a long time and, you know, we can't be, we can't afford to be right. But it just, once again, it doesn't make a difference or it's not as important as what we think. It's, but what are the other bodies that are heavily regulated, you know, think as well?
So would I be correct in saying that?
Well, we can't turn it into, you know, you know, you can't turn it into low-income housing because that brings up, you know, a whole nother bunch of caveats, you know, you know, as well.
So would I be correct in saying that even if you were to get up to the 20 years tonight like you're asking for? And then the fair market or all these studies that y'all are doing don't work out in y'all's favor, then y'all would just not go through with the project? Is that kind of what I'm hearing here? That it doesn't all come together at the end? You're going to?
Well, yes, but that's never really, you know, we know the answers before, you know, we go to the next step. If, if there was any indication that there wasn't a market for these, these units, we wouldn't be here tonight.
So what are your indicators for the study of the company?
It's, the only thing we've got to do is we're, we're discussing with the market study people, you know, basically, you know, they think, you know, some of the two-bedroom units should be 1,100 square feet and ours are like 970 or something like that. So it's just some very minor stuff. Which goes again, goes with design development and things like that. But it's, it's not going to change the indicator of the comps that they used out there or, or the absorption or how fast the apartments will rent or things like that. So I mean, it's just some very minor stuff that we want to dot our i's and cross our t's.
Mr. Cooper asked the timeframe of completion. And I understand that you have to go through all of the redesign and everything. Typically, how long does a project like this take once you get started with construction to end your construction?
You know, typically, and I wrote a note down, is, you know, we, we go into a project, you know, for example, if it was an eight-story building or something, you know, generally you want to get a temporary certificate of occupancy. Okay, on a, on a building, on a building like this, approximately, you know, we want to get people in there, starting to get, be in there, you know, 12 to 14 months after we, after we start. And if you want any more explanation on how we do that, um, okay.
The 12, 14 was literally all I was wondering. Um, asked about y'all possibly selling the property? And I know that y'all said that you don't intend to do that. What percentage of projects have y'all sold in the past within, outside of that five to 10-year range?
If I can answer that question, we have not sold, to my recollection, we have not sold any of our rental properties that we developed or we bought. Before, we used to be for sale developers, you know what that means? Is you build it to sell, those are we have sold. But the rental properties, to my knowledge, we have not sold any, mainly because rental market is great, you know, and therefore we are enjoying it while it, while we can.
Y'all said earlier that pretty much you didn't plan on going forward with this project without the eleven to twenty year extension. But you also told Tiffany that you are willing to negotiate. Would you consider fifteen years?
I like to rule.
Let me ans-, answer that. State law says the twenty years. I think one of the confusions we're getting here tonight is we keep talking about this project. The ordinance here is for any historic property that could be redeveloped in Edgefield County. So it could be Kendall Mill, it could be the hotel, it could be some other commercial property. So it's the twenty year for any historic property that's gonna be redeveloped, not just this property.
That's not my question. My question is, they talked about doing an MOU possibly. Would you all be willing to do eleven to fifteen years instead of eleven to twenty years?
You know, it's too difficult to answer that question because we have calculated this subsidy request based on our detailed analysis of what the costs are, what the rents are, what the construction term is going to be. And ever since we started, things have started gone slightly on the tough side, as somebody pointed out here. Interest rates are going up, inflation is there. So I don't want to quickly jump and say, of course, we want to work with this community. We want to work with the county and the city to the best possible way. Whatever we decide today is not going to decide on what the final things is going to happen for this project. There is going to be expectations from the community, there's going to be an agreement. What I meant by the negotiations, the agreement has to be worked out between both of us. But I, I cannot arbitrarily say fifteen or twelve or thirteen or something like that. We definitely are going to be working with the city and the county to make this project viable. At the same time, ask a reasonable request as to whatever real gap is, as to make the project happen.
Excuse me for a second. I think, I think the topic with regarding negotiations came up when we were speaking about the Warren Mill, how, I, I think they, they agreed, I'm just, I'm trying to, yeah, basically after ten years or something, they agreed to, you know, if they're paying ten thousand dollars in the beginning, then they agreed in eleven through twenty to pay twenty thousand, something to that effect. Okay, so, but right now, it appears that state law says, you know, you can't do that. You know, what was brought up earlier is that, you know, we can accommodate that possibly by, via a redevelopment agreement. It had nothing to do with whether the period is ten years or fifteen years or twenty years. But it was, you know, after a certain number of years, eleven through twenty, instead of paying thirty six thousand dollars a year, we'll pay, you know, thirty six plus, you know, whatever. And that can be worked out possibly through a redevelopment agreement, but not in a manner that was thought with the Warren Mill. So hopefully that clarifies a little.
So my, my last question is, we've heard several different taxable values that y'all would be paying, like what we expect in revenue, which one's correct? What do we expect the, the tax amount that they'll be paying for the first one through ten years?
I believe that, if I recall, that the property was purchased at a, or it's for sale at one point five million.
That's correct.
So it would be based on one point five million dollars.
It's what?
The contract is for a million dollars, the sale price.
So whatever the sale price is, that's what it would be valued at for that period of time.
That's where we've got that range of twenty-two to thirty-five or whatever. Okay, thank you. Thank y'all.
All right. Would anybody else like to speak? Is everybody satisfied? Well, then you better speak, Megan. Well, I, I'm just telling you, you got the two guys here tonight, so this is your opportunity. Okay, I just want to make sure because I don't want people to show up and I'm gonna say sorry, but not sorry to council and to the public. This was very long. It is, we've been here two hours and thirty-five minutes, most of it in this public hearing. But I wanted to do that. I want to fully and robustly debate this. So if you haven't had your opportunity, now is your opportunity. I'll sit here till twelve o'clock tonight in this public hearing if we have to. But, but, but you can ask it, your question tonight, Megan. All right, well, that's fine. You don't want to and that's fine. I just wanted to tell everybody else, this is your opportunity with the two developers here. So this is your last chance before I close it. Does anybody have anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to point out that the ordinance that's pending for the years ten through twenty, council would have to by resolution approve that extension for ten years. So there would have to be a resolution. So regarding this specific project, it would come back before us, irregardless of the pending ordinance.
Okay. So council, what I'd like to do is take a ten minute recess. We've been here for a long time. We need a little bit of a break, if that's okay? I'm sorry. Hang on a second, please. Hold on a second, please.
I would like to say, before we take this break, I have really enjoyed the conversation here tonight. I have really been schooled. I had mixed emotions. But as time passed by and listened to the contractor give us the right direction and tell us all, there've been so many questions asked tonight. I know that being on council as long as I have, we will not be able to please everybody. The Bible said we have not because we ask not. So this is the time, Mr. Cameron, say everybody go, this is the time to ask. We can enjoy for a break. Thank you.
All right, we'll start back with old business when we start back. So ten minutes, council, please. I was hoping that was the case by now. So that's good news. Yay, we got through this one.
And so tomorrow, tonight and tomorrow, they're not expecting you to work closely with them today. So we'll still have some little storms, but guys.
And now we can do it.
I was, I was different this morning. The strawberries are something. It's lunch. I've chopped, I've strawberries and we're bored.
Yeah, and what's her last name? Okay, thank you, okay. You know, Bezacannon Road is off, not Bezacannon Road, Highway twenty-five. And every time I turn around. Yeah, yeah.
And the board was like, did I shop?
My wife, she's been watching this. She said it's one of the best pieces in Jersey. She is researching this right now. She has a mystery. I agree. It's into millions of dollars.
I know what Roger would know. I think it's a percentage.
Gressen, they're behind me. Aren't they, aren't they on, um, Lakeview Extension? Young, young woman, lost her husband.
That's right.
Brand new house that chicks, I write next door to Milton and Marie Loman. Well, you know, they both, they both passed. That's Night Lane. So I start there and I go down to the, into that. And then your cousin's right across the street about within that size of property.
Long minutes.
And she's a nurse and she, no, her sister-in-law.
Congratulations. Yeah, I can tell you Johnston's, Frank Nicholson won by twenty-three votes over Thomas Holmes.
Oh, my word.
But because there's three running, I think they have to have a runoff.
They have to have, it has to have fifty-one percent, yeah.
So I think there's runoff between those two. Davis finished way back.
Like, that's a shock.
I know, right?
Do you know any other outcomes?
That's it, that's all I had. There was no other contestants.
I thought, I thought. Scott called me. That's where I worked at a lady and I don't know what that's about because I don't live there. I'm getting the grapevine, but they were like really.
He just, he just said he won and he heard it.
Okay, well, that's a lot. I did too.
All right, Ben, you ready? Ready, Tess? Tess, Tess ready?
We last after people.
All right. It's been about ten minutes, so council, we are back in session. And appreciate everybody letting us take a break there. So now we start with old business number one, which is consideration of approval of second reading of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven, eighty to revise special tax assessment for laying up to twenty years for investments of over one million dollars. So we've heard from the, everybody in the public hearing, council. I'll ask the administrator if there's anything else we need to know before we talk about this.
No. I'll be brief, no.
Best answer I've heard all night.
Thank you.
All right, council, we've heard all the debate, but any comments or questions from council that we need to discuss? Okay, then hearing none, is there a motion to give second reading to ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven, eighty? Mr. Talbot makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cooper seconds. Any discussion?
I just have a clarifying question.
Yes.
So on third reading, we will have third reading plus a resolution on?
Not, not necessarily. You, you could have third reading followed by a redevelopment agreement. But that would be separate from, because again, this ordinance is allowing this tax credit for
So with on third reading, we will have third reading plus a resolution on.
Not, not necessarily. You, you could have third reading followed by a redevelopment agreement. Uh, but that would be separate from, cause again, this ordinance is allowing this tax credit for any property. And what I think council is looking for is a specific redevelopment agreement for the mill. Just as you may want to have a redevelopment agreement if the hotel was gonna go ahead and be redeveloped.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
So that could, that could happen at the third reading, or it could be in June or July, or some other time.
Understood, thank you.
So, Chairman.
Yes.
So we are on number two, right? I just wanna make sure we write on old business.
Number one.
Oh, number one.
Jackie, could you take your microphone and, thank you.
With the revising, it just takes away number one, so. Number two then, Jackie, for you.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
So, Dr. Ken, do you have any comments on this ordinance, cause we're about to vote? Okay, yes. Um, okay. Um, old business number one, um, the Dublin. Okay, cool. Okay. I'm not for this here. So, I guess I'm asking, did you ask, are we all in favor of it?
No, I'm just asking for comments. We've had a motion.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Talbert made the motion, and Mr. Cooper seconded to approve the ordinance, and now we're in discussion.
Okay.
So is there any more discussion?
I guess my discussion would be why they cannot pay their own taxes. And I, oh, where are they going now? That's the only thing that I would like to say is that I, I'm not really kicking against what they are doing by, by the kind of mi- mill at no mean, but I don't agree with them not paying taxes when we have to pay taxes. That just mean.
Okay.
Will they be paying some taxes though, correct?
They, as it currently would stand, they'd be paying, if they purchased the property for a million dollars, they'd be paying a million dollar assessment based on a million dollars.
And currently, the owners who do have it pay no taxes?
There is no taxes, BNC. If you work through a redevelopment agreement with them, as we originally proposed that in year eleven through twenty, that the taxes would be based on double the assessed value, then it would be based on two million dollars. That you'd be, so year one through ten would be one million, year eleven through twenty would be two million. So they would be paying some taxes, but without that redevelopment agreement, it'd be one million from year one to year twenty, based on the ordinance and state law.
Ken.
Let me answer your question.
Keep in mind, right, right now, the ordinance is just ten years.
Ten years tax-free.
No, ten years at the lower, at the fixed assessment.
Okay.
All we're doing right now is saying we have, we're giving the option to do twenty years.
But we don't have to do. If another project comes up, we don't have to do twenty nine, twenty years.
In fact, in the ordinance, we're saying, you know, it's going to be ten years unless they meet these criteria. And by resolution, council can extend that to twenty years. That's giving that option. But this ordinance really has nothing to do with Kendall Mill. I mean, long-term it does, but in short-term it doesn't.
And this can only apply to historic properties, of which there are what? Give me a rough estimate of how many we got in the county, but this could even apply to.
I can't tell you how many.
Roger, do you know? Less than a dozen, Ken, what do you think? Less than a dozen? Okay. Rhonda says there's nine properties to which this could apply.
If you take into account homes, there could be a lot more than that. But if you're talking about more commercial, industrial-type properties, there's not, probably less than a dozen.
Okay.
You know, one of the things, uh, just generically, that I think we pride ourselves in Edgefield County is our history. And as a historian, that's my degree. You know, when I travel rural counties, and I've traveled a lot of them, um, I've been blessed to have that opportunity. One of the most devastating things that's going on in our country today is the dilapidation of old commercial and residential buildings. And I think Congress has recognized that as a, as a problem nationwide. And, um, you know, I've often thought we need to budget money for demolition to get rid of blights on our da- on our town squares and other areas. We can drive through some of our communities and look at houses that haven't been maintained for decades, and it's devastating. So, um, you know, I'm taking it away from this ordinance, but as someone who loves history, and we pride ourselves on history, let's get this thing renovated and celebrate our history while also preparing for the future. So I'm in favor of it, and that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Motion passes four to one, Dr. Kenyon voting against. Next council is number two under old business, which is consideration of approval of third reading of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven, ninety-nine to amend section two dash two eighty-eight, Edgefield County Code of Ordinance Economic Development Committee. Of course, we've been discussing this since January, this is the third reading of revamping that committee. Um, I think we've talked about it, but are there any questions or comments about that one? Hearing none, is there a motion to, um, let me turn back my page here, I'm sorry, to approve ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven, ninety-nine?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cooper makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And, and Councilwoman Ireland seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, the motion passes unanimously. And next we're on new business. We took care of item one under, uh, new business, uh, earlier, so we moved to number two, which is approval of first reading of an order, ordinance to provide tax incentive for Project Charlotte. Um, you can see in the bold print what's that, that's about, and tonight would be approval by ordinance only, but I'll ask the administrator if there's anything we need to discuss tonight.
Yes, this is, we, council is allowed to approve ordinances by title only, in this case, this is a development ordinance. There were some typographical errors in the ordinance that was presented to us by the developers, and that's why we just have the title here, we want to clarify all that before we buy you with the ordinance. But you will have that second reading.
All right, I just wanna, uh, make sure that if we're not gonna name the project until, until third reading, I want to advertise the public hearing to be on third reading, not on second reading.
That'd be fine, and this project is to provide an incentive to this business that's in the incentive zone for ten years. And you'll get more information on it at the next meeting.
Counsel, any questions, comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve, um, this ordinance by, uh, title only?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Talbert makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Ireland seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is, uh, item three, the approval of employment agreement for the county administrator. Um, the vice chair and I met with the interim administrator, oh gosh, several weeks ago now, and, um, discussed this and, and worked this out with him, so I'll ask the administrator if you'd like to tell us a little bit about this agreement.
Well, this, this is, uh, to allow me to continue to have the pleasure of working with you all. But after a three-hour meeting, I think I've changed my mind. Seriously, last March, uh, I got a call from our chairman at that time, Chairman Cooper, uh, asking if I would go ahead and be at the interim with the county for a few months. Uh, a year later, um, I'm still with you, I don't know if that's because of your foolishness, or my foolishness, or both of our parts. Uh, but I have talked to the chairman and vice chairman about this, and I am willing to stay on with the county through the end of this year if you so desire.
Counsel, I, I know that, I certainly would say that's something I'd like to see us do. Uh, ask for comments or questions from council.
I'll make a quick comment. I had the pleasure of meeting with our, our administrator today, and we joked that had I said at the outset, we'd like you to come work for us for eighteen months, so it would have definitely been no, but, but you have grown to love us, I think. No, that's what I got to say. We're so grateful to you. I just wanna say thank you for being, uh, standing in the gap for us.
All right.
There are no more questions or comments, is there a motion to approve the employment agreement for the county administrator?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Talbert makes the motion, Dr. Kenyon seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, the motion passes unanimously. Next is, excuse me, number four, consider of approval authorizing the county administrator to provide a letter of support to the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources, supporting their acquisition of eighty-six point seventy-one acres in Edgefield County. So I'll ask him if he would explain this one to us, please.
A couple of years ago, you approved, uh, allowing the state of South Carolina to purchase this property through the Department of Natural Resources. That has gone through, but the owner then said, there's some additional property I'd like to add to this, uh, and they are now asking for another letter of support stating that you would like to go ahead and have this property put in a conservation easement. This is something we talked about, you had George Thornton here, uh, several months ago, talking about conservation easements and the importance of that for the county. So I believe this is following the direction that we want to see, which is keeping more rural property in the county and keeping it in its natural state. So, I'm recommending to you tonight to go ahead and give us, uh, approval to go ahead and write that support letter to the state so that they acquire this property.
Questions or comments from council? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the administrator, uh, authorization to write this letter?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Talbert makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Cooper seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is, uh, under new business, consideration of approval of providing eight thousand dollars to fund the Betis Academy Road feasibility study through arts. So again, Mr. Administrator, I'll ask if you would take us to this one, please?
Most everybody here knows what arts stands for. It's the Augusta Transportation Study Group, uh, that combines primarily Akin, Richmond County, Columbia County, a portion of Edgefield County. They would like to go ahead and study what would the future of Betis Academy Road look like, um, and what are the needs looking twenty, thirty years in the future? The study will cost approximately two hundred thousand dollars, of which there is a grant that pays eighty percent of it, and the other twenty percent, or forty thousand, has to come from a local match. Akin County has already provided their twenty-five thousand. They are coming to Edgefield County, provide the other fifteen thousand. Our CTC has approved seven thousand towards this, and so we would need to come up with the other eight thousand so that the study could be done, um, hopefully within the next couple of months. So tonight, we're asking that you would authorize eight thousand dollars coming from your contingency account to pay for this study. Uh, we probably won't have to make the payments for a while, but, uh, we need the authority to go forward with this project.
Comments or questions from council? Well, seems like a, a good investment to me, just for us to do this. Uh, eight thousand of two hundred thousand is pretty low price to, to get this done, and they're gonna have to, we're gonna have to get this done to do our portion of Betis Academy Road. If there's no questions or comments from council, is there a motion to, uh, approve, uh, this eight thousand dollars to fund this feasibility study?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Cooper makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Talbert seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, the motion passes unanimously. Next, number six, uh, under new business, consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven, eighty-one, an ordinance providing for the FY twenty-two, twenty-three general operating budget and establishing ancillary budgets for E nine-one administration, economic development, solid waste disposal, victims' bill of rights, emergency medical services, road maintenance, tri-county solicitor, assistant solicitor, school resource officers, event security, sheriff discretionary funds, clerk of court discretionary funds, pre-trial intervention, and criminal domestic violence. So I know, uh, council, we had our budget workshop, um, we went through, um, a couple of, well, hour and a half of, uh, going through the administrator's explanation of the budget. We went page by page, uh, in the budget, and we, of course, heard from, um, elected officials, department heads, and, um, and the public. So, um, with that, we've got some pretty good background on this, but I'll ask the administrator, because as we know, in all readings, there'll be changes because things come up and such too, and we may have things we wanna add or subtract. So with that, I'll ask the administrator if he'll go through the things we need to talk about tonight relative to the budget.
Two major changes, uh, have occurred since we met on the fifteenth. One, the Supreme Court Justice has asked all the counties to add a staff member who will work between the clerk of court's office and the magistrate's office to bring some of the backlog. We have a hundred and eighty thousand cases that are backlogged in the state of South Carolina. Uh, this individual will liaison with the attorneys, uh, the court, uh, and other officials to try to move these trials forward. So he strongly, um, recommends that we add this person. That individual, uh, would be at a beginning salary. Uh, when I talked to our clerk of court, uh, he stated that not only would he be able to help his situation, but we will also use that individual to help the magistrate out, who would like to have fifty court cases this next year, cause they are extremely backlogged. So that's in addition as to adding a whole, uh, new individual to the clerk of court's budget. The second thing is, we received our long-awaited Archer study. We've talked about that. Um, there's a lot of concern that the employees have mentioned over the years that it's been twenty years since we had a study of our salaries. Um, and although we've tried to make some adjustments with the grades, we have not done any wholesale adjustments or looked at all the salaries within the whole employment of all the departments, including the elected officials. That study came back, uh, we have in the budget a five percent increase. Sixty percent of the employees, not including those in the sheriff's department and the paramedics, based on the Archer study, will get an increase over that five percent. So forty percent of the employees, the Archer study said that our five percent covers any increases that are necessary. However, there's sixty percent that we needed to make a further adjustment to meet the salary recommendation from the Archer study. They looked at five different counties, they looked at, uh, several cities, uh, to come up with a average salary recommendation and grades for the entire county. I have met with all the affected elected officials, uh, finished my last discussion this afternoon with one of them, and met with the affected department heads concerning any adjustments that were gonna be made, and they all seemed satisfied. I'm sure they would always like to have more, but, uh, they reviewed the recommended salaries that we have, and they were more than pleased that a number of people were gonna be going up, some as little as six percent, uh, some as high as fourteen, fifteen, sixteen percent, uh, over what they're currently making. That will add approximately, I have it here in my notes.
I think it's ninety-five thousand.
Ninety-five thousand dollars in new salaries, over and above the five percent. Uh, as we heard from our audit report tonight, um, our reserves are growing. Uh, in fact, the number I had received on our reserves was, we had about six point. In fact, the number I had received on our reserves was, we had about six point three. Tonight, they said seven point five million. So it's actually higher than what I was originally given. So some of my numbers are gonna have to be adjusted. Whereas I stated before, there was gonna be five months of reserves that we would have. With these new salaries, it was gonna go down to four point eight. With the new numbers we got from our audit today, it's probably gonna go up more like five point three, five point four months of reserves that we will have available. So the county is in, compared to when I was here the other two times, we're in excellent shape. And our employees deserve the best. We have some excellent, excellent employees. And so this Archer study and the recommendations that they are making in here, that the changes that we're recommending to you are well-deserved. Now, I think it's also, needs to be stated that last year, we gave a twenty-five percent increase to the jailers, to the dispatchers, and to the deputies. So the starting salaries went up twenty-five percent. And then we made other adjustments to corporals and sergeants, lieutenants, and the other paramedics. So I was concerned when we got the study in, was the twenty-five percent enough, or should it have been higher? Should we be giving some kind of a boost to our sheriff's department and paramedics? So comparison of what we are currently starting a salary for a deputy is thirty-nine thousand four hundred. That's where we currently start them at. Their recommendation for a deputy, based on their salary survey, was thirty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars. So we are paying eleven percent higher than what they recommended, our starting salaries for the sheriff's department. Same thing for the dispatchers, it's eleven percent, paramedics at seven point six percent. The only ones that I'm a little concerned about is the jailers. We're at four point two percent above what they're recommending. So in all cases, we are currently paying much higher than what the Archer study states for the paramedics and for the sheriff's departments. So I knew that was a concern on, it certainly was on the sheriff's part and on our EMS director, of what we have available to them. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have concerning this. But I believe that the Archer study was a good study. Taz helped an awful lot on that. Leanne Anderson, who's not here, put a lot of time into it. And I'm pleased that we're gonna be able to go ahead and give some nice raises to many of the employees. That, it's well-deserved.
Let me just ask a couple of quick questions, just to make sure I understand. So in the budget that I'm holding in my hand, that we're going to give first reading to tonight, item A is not in here. Is that what I'm hearing? So item A is the, what the chief justice recommends. You haven't added that in already, since it was a draft when you were doing this?
I added in the clerk and all those salary increases in the budget that you would have been receiving a couple of days ago.
Okay. So item A and B are already in here?
Are already in there.
Okay.
So when I state that the budget currently is fourteen million fifty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars, that includes A and B.
Okay. All right. So that said, I'm just gonna ask council, since it's already in here, we don't have to amend it. I was for both of them, but I don't know about the rest of you. Are A and B, everybody okay with those two things already being in the budget? Nobody has any issue with that? Okay.
Can I ask one quick question? If, about A, it says we'd like to keep this position until the backlog. Do we have an idea? And will, so will we just say, "Okay, when we catch up, we're done with you"? Or do we keep them on for, what's our plan there, our long-term plan?
I asked the clerk of court, surely you're gonna want to go ahead and have that person reduced from the budget in future years, whenever we're done with the backlog? And he chuckled a little bit and said, "We'll have to see at that time." It's hard, once you add an employee, to say that you're gonna take them away.
Right. So it's there. I just wanted that to be addressed, and we hear that, and, right.
But no, I did address that with him, that obviously this is a temporary employee.
Right. So.
But I hope not to be here for the next budget cycle, so.
All right. Before I move on, then, council, anything from A or B that we need to talk about? If everybody's good with that, then I will go to item C, we'll take them one at a time, and then we'll take up anything else in the budget anybody wants to also. So item C is the Civic League. So I'll ask the administrator, even other than what we heard tonight, is there anything else you needed to tell us?
There, I did not include, when we met on the fifteenth, we heard from some people concerning this, including the salaries for council. No firm recommendation was made at that time, so that is currently not in the budget. But I did list it here because I knew those were topics that were gonna be addressed tonight. But they are not currently in the budget as stands.
All right. So let's discuss, council, item C, because I know there's probably differences of opinion. And on this one, if it's okay, I'll just start. I would tell you that, you know, we all know the Civic League does a fantastic job in Edgefield County. They play an important role in our county in what they do. And it's also nice of them to come and talk to us and let us know their needs. However, just because somebody shows up at a meeting and asks for funds doesn't necessarily mean we should give it to them. I propose to you that we do what we've always done with nonprofit organizations. If they perform a direct service for the county, then we pay them for that service. For example, we pay the Senior Citizens Center money because they provide thirty-one people to help operate our convenience centers. And while the Civic League does good work, I can name thirty or more nonprofits in Edgefield County that also do good work. And with more money, they could do more good work. However, I don't think it's good for us to pick winners and losers in this process. It seems to me that if we give any money to the Civic League, we should invite every single nonprofit here and give them the same amount of money. I don't think we need to do that. I suggest that we continue to support our nonprofits with our personal time, talents, and treasure. But I don't think we should tie up taxpayer money in it. Let's let the taxpayers decide where to spend their money when it comes to nonprofit organizations or other non-government organizations. That's my input on that one. All up on the floor.
Well, Mr. Chairman, since you said it that way, and you, and to me, I'm not gonna say that's the wrong way to say it. I personally think that the Civic League, that is just me, they said, they stated that they was gonna ask Trenton and Johnson for help. And I personally don't see nothing wrong with helping the Civic League. Because they're right here in Edgefield. I mean, I just think they support us, that we, I just feel as though we need to support the Civic League. Now, giving them twenty-five thousand dollars, plus whoever they hired, twenty-five thousand dollars. No, I do not agree with it. I do not. But twenty-five thousand dollars divided by three cap, three cities, Edgefield, Trenton, and Johnston, should be somewhere around... Eight thousand? I mean, the guy did state that we looked good in the budget. If we don't do eight, can we give them something? I mean, I'm just for giving the Civic League something. That's just me.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to also address that. We know that they came to us in workshop, and they had some discussions. Some of us feel that they didn't present themselves real well. So they came back tonight and had a flow map out what they was gonna do. So I'm like, I'm like, I would like to support them. They does good work. Edgefield County is growing like leaps and bounds, and I'm quite sure they're gonna continue to do good work. So I would like to make, I know they asked for a fund. I thought first they said thirty-five, but came back tonight, said twenty-five. I have no problem with, recommend that we give them twenty-five thousand. And that's my recommendation.
Yeah. Um, I agree, the Civic League does great work. I am not in favor of putting them in our budget. I am not in favor of that. And the fifty thousand, which was the original twenty-five, or the twenty-five and then the twenty-five for the salary, like Jackie said, there's no way. What I would like to see happen, and what I could see us having discussion over and would consider, is if they came with a project. It's kinda, it was like they gave us a wish list tonight. That's kinda how I felt. Here's our Christmas list, and we want you to fulfill it. And I mentioned the bathroom specifically because that was something I did not know about. I did not know our citizens go over there and use that bathroom, and that's the only public bathroom at festivals. And I didn't know, I didn't know that. So if they said, you know, "We're gonna renovate these bathrooms, and we need your help for this," I think that's a good discussion that we could have. Just fulfilling a wish list or just writing this, I would rather do it that way and putting in the budget I'm not in favor of. But coming to us with a clearly planned-out project and asking us, and then telling us what Trenton or another entity might contribute as well, I could see there being a presentation and debate for that. So that's my, that's my.
So as someone who's studied Edgefield County for thirty years, twenty years before moving here, and I mentioned this morning, it was one of the, earlier, it wasn't this morning, it was earlier. It was one of the first places I visited when I came here to study my own lineage. And I know with the demographic changes taking place in our country, it's a great asset to our community. So I'm fully in favor, I was gonna say between twenty-five and forty, with the municipalities doing the difference. I could elaborate more, but I'll support what Ms. Kenyon and what Mr. Talbert has already said. It's a starting point.
So those who are for it need to make an amendment.
And would this be for one time, or are you wanting to put this in budget for?
I would, well, I'm sorry to say first, it would be my preference that we do it on an annual basis. Because I know people study Edgefield County annually. There's a lot of families in our country that can trace their lineage back to our county, especially when our county was geographically much larger than it is today. So I think it has tremendous value. I would do it annually.
I would say annual too, and they put on it, and once they come back next year with the budget, they may have, they will have a better printout so we can go by it.
Well, my only last comment is, council, keep in mind that you're just about to make them a government body. Because their budget, if I've got it right, was seventy-two thousand. They presented it to us last time. So they're adding this twenty-five to it for the person they want to hire, but they're also asking us for the twenty-five. So you're essentially paying more than two-thirds of their budget now. So why don't you just go ahead and make a motion for seventy-two thousand and make them a governmental entity, and don't worry about it anymore. Take a nonprofit away.
Can I say something? I was for giving them something. I didn't say what exact amount. But I still want us to agree and disagree and be on the call. Now, to me, the way you saying it, Mr. Kamal, I feel a little angry in that. I'm just saying. I don't want us, we gonna agree and disagree. I understand that. I didn't say nothing about any, but I say from the bottom of my heart, we ought to give them something. I say it was Trenton, Johnston, and Edgefield. I said divide it by twenty-five and give them something. That was just me. And I know we gotta agree on something, but for you to say, "We might as well give them the whole seventy-two," I feel a little remorse in that. I do. I do. Everything is not gonna go everybody way. I want everybody to understand it. It's not. But yet, instead, with the economy and with the inflation rising and so much going on, I just feel as though we ought to have a little sympathy and give them something. Because they got a lot of stuff over there that really need to be done, and they seeking for help. If they can't get it from us, where would they get it from? Out of their own pocket? We already, I mean, the guy said we looking pretty good. I didn't say I was for the whole seventy-two. I wanna repeat that. But I just feel like if it weren't but five thousand, we ought to gave them something. That was just me. But I don't see, I just don't see giving them the whole seventy-two thousand.
And do you want it annually, or do you want it just one time?
I prefer annually, but with a low amount annually. And what I mean by low amount, they haven't still yet went to Trenton and then Johnston and see what kind of help they can get.
So you'd like wait until they come back with a deal?
Exactly.
So for first reading on item number C, I would make a motion that for first reading, for item C, we approve twenty-five thousand dollars on an annual basis with the request that they come back to us next month to share with us what they learned from the municipalities that they're visiting. And I would also ask them to visit North Augusta, because North Augusta is the fastest-growing municipality inside our county. And they may be able to support considerably. That's my motion. Twenty-five thousand annually, but asking them to come back to the next meeting with the results from the meeting with the four municipalities.
And I second it.
So that the amendment has been made by Mr. Cooper and seconded by Mr. Talbert. Any other discussion on the amendment?
Point of clarification, if you might. Is that twenty-five thousand for the capital improvement projects, or the twenty-five thousand for the salary for that person? Or are we just saying twenty-five thousand, use it for whatever you want?
I'll just add to the motion that we make it for the salary. And then they could raise funds for their capital improvements.
What, is there in our, what you call our money, ARPA money for Civic League?
The reason I asked the question, if it was for the capital improvement projects, I would then recommend we use the ARPA money for it. If it's for the salary, then we're gonna have to go to the general funds for that.
But ARPA money is only available for a season, right?
Correct. And that's why we've been, in general, using that money for capital improvement projects because they're one-time. So if the twenty-five thousand for the salary, then that's what I will let them know. And they'll have to go ahead and then determine how they're gonna get money for the other twenty-five thousand capital improvements.
And kinda echoing what Dean was saying a while ago, if we do this toward the salary, we basically made them our county employee then, right? I mean, they're our, they're our employee. If we're, am I wrong?
Well, they're gonna be paying more than twenty-five thousand to this person.
Well, no, they asked. They said this is for the salary.
When you add in their benefits and everything else with it, it'll be more than twenty-five thousand.
But if we're doing that, are we not beholden to pay those things too? Are we making them a county employee? Were we gonna have to do that? I'm just wondering.
I don't think you want them as a county employee.
Maybe it feels like we're doing that.
Because if you do, then we have to get into grade and salary, and what you're doing is just providing the twenty-five thousand, is what I'm hearing.
Right.
Right? But in a sense, it's making them an employee.
So do we need to clarify the motion in any way?
No, I just, I needed clarification.
Okay.
I think he made a motion, and I think he amended his, is amending his motion. And I think Mr. Talbert was the one that seconded, so he was, I assume, a friendly amendment.
So it's twenty-five thousand for the position, money to fund that?
I would just like to rephrase it, start over. I would just say twenty-five thousand for them to use as they deem appropriate on an annual basis.
That's the motion that was seconded by Mr. Talbert. Okay, everybody aware of the motion? Twenty-five thousand to use for whatever they wanna use. Right?
Correct.
Annually.
Annually.
Yeah.
Based on, based on the things that we have said that they do for us, for the county as a whole. But I still would like them to come back to us and let us know what they have learned from the other four municipalities.
Are you gonna reduce it though?
I, I wouldn't reduce it, no.
Cause I, you know.
He must have given twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
I'm gonna give him that amount. I don't.
Okay, there's a amendment and a, and a second on the floor for discussion. Any other discussion before we vote on that? Okay. Hearing none, is there, uh, we have the motion seconded, so all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising your hand.
I have to raise my hand.
Now, those against, opposed, please raise your hand. Tiffany, how you voting?
Where are you going?
She raised her hand.
This is a first reading too.
Yeah, first reading, yeah.
Ma- motion passes three to two with Ms. Ireland and Mr. Campbell voting against. All right, next is item D, and this was a possible salary increase for council, so I'll just open the floor to whatever y'all would like to talk about related to that.
Mr. Campbell, Mr. Campbell. As we have discussed in our previous meeting about council needs a salary increase. Just not this year, but we started a year before. At this time, we taking it upon ourselves to follow through with it. Edgefield County Council hadn't had a salary increase in twenty-four years. You don't know what I need, excuse me. But anyway. As we travel up and down the highways. I live eighteen miles from here. Two and three meetings of once a week. And I'm quite sure that anyone have centered it. They would commit what I'm about to say. They have a witness with it. Gas prices is rising. Cost of living. I know this not a, a salary for me. But yet and still, I don't wanna take my guy out, money out of my pocket to help come to see about the citizen. So that's my, that's my two cent. It may be more if necessary.
Other comments or discussion?
And, okay, let me finish. Okay. I like to recommend. I know this we talking about twenty-five percent, thirty-five percent, if you add that up, that won't put harder for the, won't put far, far the dollar in our pocket. I like to recommend that we at least get fifty percent.
You think it's time?
Yeah.
So clearly, this is a political issue. Uh, public service is important. It's incredibly important. We live in a season where everybody screams for term limits. But very few people wanna serve their term. Very few. Why is that? It should be an honor, it, and it is a privilege. But sometimes when you serve in public service, the abuse is unparalleled to any time in history that we receive. Now, that has nothing to do with compensation, but it has to do with why people choose not to serve their term. Because I've talked to a lot of good people who will say, no way. Now, the good book says a man is worthy of his wage. So if you're a carpenter, you have a wage. If you're a welder, you're a wa- you have a wage. If you're in cybersecurity, you have a wage. If you're a pastor, you have a wage. So what is honorable? As a constituent, what do you think is fair? Is it fair for it to be a political issue where people are afraid to bring it up for a quarter of a century? Because that's where we are today. People are afraid to bring it up for, for a quarter of a century. Twenty-four years. We talk about buildings. I'm, I'm kind of on a little sermon here. But our buildings are falling down. We need good people who are qualified to step into the arena and serve. And how do we inspire that next generation to serve? How do we do that? It's not easy. Well, I think one way is to pay an honest wage. So I would second if that's a motion, and I'm not running for reelection, and I don't know if I'll ever serve again. But I think whoever sits in my chair next time deserves an honorable wage. So I second that if that's a motion.
If I can ask, I'll say if I can ask you just to hold off one moment, let everybody have a discussion first, if that's okay, and then, then we'll come back to that. Okay? Any other discussion from anybody?
I'm, I'm definitely for it. I'm definitely. I'm definitely for it. The beat up, we get, and everything else. I'm, I'm for it. I'm for a raise, and I'm not scared to say it.
Thank you.
And I'm, I agree with Scott. The beat up, we get, that behind the closed door, the phone call, now whoever is not for it, that's fine. But I'm here as a human telling you now, twenty-four years, the average person on their job today, if they hadn't had nothing in twenty-four years, they probably walk off their job. But though they own their job, they have them thirty and forty-some years. Don't even have no children and no brains. Them the ones that probably ain't gonna want no raise. I'm just him saying what I'm saying. I be, I get taken away from my two grand softball. He's not in here today, the officer. Is my grandbaby five, my grandbaby five year old? He's her coach. And so the S O, the S O S Strong Thermo. It's Kenyon, where's your grand? I said, I'm coming, but I gotta meeting at the county council. So we gonna get, they talked about Jesus Christ, we gonna get talked about. But I'm at a point now is what it's gonna be. But I can tell you right now, ain't no fella man out here gonna be on their job twenty-four or twenty-five years and not ask for a raise. And I'm saying what I'm saying, and I back it up again. So I'm for it. And I know for a fact, you can't please everybody.
Thank you.
And I'm not trying to. I'm just being fair and I'm being a human. And I've been in Strong Thermo High School thirty-four years. And every five years, we just about get a raise. That's reality. So let's face reality, we gonna get talked about that fine. But if you look at when we in tier four, tier four, that mean other counties, Jasper County, underneath of them, we holding about twenty-nine thousand. I'm average, I think our population between twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand. But the other counties, I'm looking, I'm looking at now. The way, I think geographical, they beneath us, but the rate, but the pop, the income, we at the bottom of the toe. And I think that's part of why a lot of them don't wanna bring it up. That just me.
My turn. Okay. So I'm not gonna say anything that I haven't already said to anybody who's asked me about this, so, um. It's really hard for me to vote for myself a raise. Um, I just, and first of all, let me say what an honor it is to serve. When I decided to run for office, I didn't know we got paid at all. So, you know, I didn't know. Um, coming into this, um. I do, uh, understand where Dr. Kenyon, Mr. Albert, and Mr. Cooper are coming from, especially Mr. Albert and Dr. Kenyon. Um. You know, we do put in a lot of hours. People don't realize this is not a part-time. I think we're listed as part-time employees for the county. We're not part-time. It's really, can overwhelm your life. You don't really understand that until you get in here and then you figure it out. Um. Not saying that that's bad. The, the point I can see in supporting this, uh, a raise would be that this would be the time. If we had not given any of our employees raises this year, um, I could never sit here and say this is a time for a discussion. We have given them raises. Um, and I will note that most people don't, probably don't realize we have incrementally given one percent, two percent to employees for the past, mm, ten so years. We have not been included in that, so that's why there's been no raise in X amount twenty-four years. Um. I think about it as it affects the person that comes after me. Um. Being fair to those people. Um. I don't want it to be where it can only ever be that people with deep pockets can afford to serve. That the little person could not afford to be a public servant. Um, I want to make it fair that the little person can sit up here one day and, and, and hold this seat and not feel like they can't pay for gas to get here or that kinda thing. So I can see that argument. But I cannot do fifty percent. I'm not even sure. I don't even know what a percent I could do. But I just, it's so hard for me to vote for a raise for myself. Um. I'm very torn over this because I see both sides, not for myself, because I wanna think about outside of myself. I wanna think about you, you, my fellow, and like I said, the people that come after me. Um. It's just really hard for me to do that. Um. But I wanted to just put out there the two sides that I see and how I see it. And, and so that's what I got to say. Yes, Mr. Ar- I'm just.
I'll just add on to what Tiffany said. For those who weren't here at the last meeting or the work session where we discussed this. State law does not permit a pay raise to go into effect until after the next election cycle if we put this in the budget. So we are actually, for the most part, doing this for those who come behind us. Um. And it is my hope that those who come behind us, whether, you know, it's this term or, or in twenty-twenty-four or whatever that cycle is, that they will invest themselves in the training, uh, and the education to do good service for our constituency. And that takes, it takes a lot of time, you know, as someone who invests a lot of his own time and a lot of his, his own money to, to learn. And, um, so it isn't about us. It really isn't. It's about the next team and the pressure that they will face. Some of them will be still here. I won't. Um. The pressure that they will face to push this another quarter of a century. And is that a godly thing for us to be doing for those who are serving us? I don't believe that it is. I don't. So I'm in favor of something. We gotta start somewhere. So I don't know what the cost of living increase looks like over a quarter of a century, especially in today's economy. What does it look like? I mean, twenty-four years ago, I was almost in college. So now I'm a grandparent. I'm done.
All right, thank you. Well, I guess it's my turn to weigh in, and, and I wanna start with this. You know, I wanna be understood in the fact that if you wanna pay increase, it doesn't make you a bad person. If I don't wanna pay increase, it doesn't make me a bad person. These are just opinions that we have based on our own philosophies and our, our lives and, and everything else. And that's okay. It's almost like giving to the civic league. Doesn't make you a bad person if you wanna give to them. It doesn't make you a bad person if you don't. It's just decisions we make. So I'm just gonna tell you, I'm, my position will not surprise anybody on this council. But I'm probably gonna hurt everybody's feelings along the way with what I'm gonna say, but it's not a personal attack. This is just to talk about pay raises. It's just an issue that we need to discuss. And so while I've heard what you all have to say, and I'll be outvoted, um, I, I think I need to have my, my two cents on this too. So, you know, I'm sympathetic to giving a pay raise to council in that I know it sounds like a long time since we've done it. I mean, I fully understand the thought behind it. However, I just don't think this pay raise is warranted. Um, while giving ourselves a pay raise is something we can do, I don't believe it's what citizens want us to do. Also, has been, as has been pointed out just now, you know, will become effective into it after the election, of course. But I have several reasons that I wanted to give you while I'm, while I'm against this pay raise for us. First, I think we sit in positions of honor, elected by the citizens to serve. We are servant leaders. We're not like other county employees. We're not here to make a living. Also, um, I can't imagine we're going to encourage others to run for council by increasing these salaries seven thou- several thousand dollars above the current salaries. And to be completely transparent, I want everyone in the audience to understand that the chair makes ten thousand, eight hundred dollars a year. The vice chair makes nine thousand, six hundred dollars a year, and the rest of council is paid eight thousand, four hundred dollars a year. Um, and that is by ordinance, what we have in the, in our budget and such. And, um, those are publicly available salaries, all elected official salaries, no matter how low are available to publicly. In addition, let me add, we are also eligible for medical and dental coverage. And if any of us participate in that county benefit, the county pays about five thousand a year for each of us to do that, if we participate. The county also pays about eighteen hundred dollars a year for us to be in the retirement system if we choose to participate in it. I consider all that part of our pay if you can, if you participate in either or both of those. These jobs we hold are part-time jobs. They aren't meant to be full-time jobs as count, in a county as small as ours. Um, also, if you look at the salaries of county council members in the state, you'll note there are county councils that cover more population than we do and get paid less than we do, so I can point those out too. In addition, I don't wanna compare us to our neighbors, just to put it out there, because we aren't competing against them for council members like we are competing for sheriff's deputies and EMS workers and so on. Also, I wanna point out that right now, without a raise, each of us right now makes more money in these elected positions than any other locally elected position. For example, we make more money than every Edgefield County school board member. We make more money than any town council member in Johnston, Edgefield, Trenton, and North Augusta. And we make, we get paid more than any mayor in Johnston, Edgefield, and Trenton. Finally. We give employees a five percent increase, which is fantastic. And on top of that, sixty percent are gonna get something more than that. I don't remember any increase close to the amount in the past, and I am so proud of that. But then we're gonna turn around and give ourselves a fifty percent increase? If I'm a county employee, I would be more than mad and certainly very disappointed in us. I think our citizens deserve better than that, and I think we should leave our salaries where they are.
I would like to say something, and I understand why Mr. Campbell liked to be last, so he can read that, that's fine. But Mr. Talbert only suggests fifty percent, Mr. Campbell. He didn't say, can we have a vote on it? He suggested, and that's why I think you like to read your notes last, so that, so that everybody, all the constituents can make us, you can be little of us. That ain't what we are here for. Now, and I noticed even when I did the same thing last year with Ms. Gail Butler Smith, we'll back them into here. You want to be last to prove your point. That wasn't about no proving no point, Mr. Campbell. You, and that is your reason for be, for wanna be last. I could've been last and probably did a lot of more things and said that. But here's the thing. We can get deep and complicated with this thing. Sheriff. Saying what I'm saying, and I think you know what I'm saying, because I can look at you and say this. He did not, and I repeat, he did not. And I would want you to think, and I wanna make sure the public know, it's not about a racial thing. But he did not say that we, he wanted a fifth of, he just suggest. He just suggested 50. So now it can go on Facebook, wherever y'all want to do. But he said, he just only recommended. That was not approved yet by you. Let's make a motion. It was not, let's do the godly thing and the right thing. Now, come on, y'all go to church and do this and that, but don't try to be last as a chairman and be leader of us and read a historical book on what you saying. Now, I'm finished, Chair of Campbell.
Thank you, Dr. Kenyon. And I, and I will point out that I said I would hurt a lot of people's feelings in what I had to say.
Yeah, but you.
And I also want to point out to you that on the civic league, I went first. So I don't always go last.
Okay, so now, now, I want the congregation to understand what I'm talking about. That's Mr. Campbell. He got a back, he got some kind of way of getting you back. That's our new chairman. Now, it's back on you.
All right. Any other comments from council on this topic? And I was, I certainly entertain an amendment.
I, I just have a question, um, from Ms. Ireland, because I think your, your point was well stated, that this really is about the future. I think we're in agreement on that, when you look at the history. Um, what do you think? Is it, looking at cost of living increases for the last quarter of a century, when a, a position, whatever position it is, has not received any increase, what do you think is a fair increase when you, when you're considering 24 years? Uh, because maybe 50% isn't the right number. I'm looking at the fact that nothing has been done for a quarter of a century, and it's primarily because it's a political issue and people use it to defeat you. Um, but the, but my point is, you know, the other point that you stated, which I think was very well articulated, is public service shouldn't be about only for those who can serve without no pay. Um, not if we want the best person. You know, there's a school teacher out there or there a homemaker that might be out there that, that would benefit us by investing the amount of time we invest. So what is the right percentage, do you think?
Um, I don't know that there is, that I have a right percentage. I know that, um, someone asked me at a meeting, at another meeting that we went to, uh, and I'll show you how this ties in, when we were doing the, the, um, employee one time, the, the big bonuses that we were able to give, you know. Are y'all giving yourselves the bonuses? No. Um, so I think, and I, and again, I didn't realize until I got up here. When I was down there, I kind of assumed that when you did the 1%, these guys, when I was down there, it being these guys, were being included in that 1%, 2% pot. So I think if I were going to consider it, and 1% sounds like nothing, but I think if we, if I would like to see it, I would like to be treated like the rest of the county employees. I don't want to be treated a, above the, the other county employees. Does that make sense? And then that's just probably, will be balked at because that's not a lot, but you gotta start somewhere. And I know we would, we can't play catch-up from all the other years, but maybe just starting from here forward, doing that inclusion, including us in that might be the answer. Might be a, a good compromise to this. I don't know.
I'll just say one more thing. I think this is a healthy discussion. There's nothing wrong with the discussion.
Right.
So I'm happy with any percentage, but I am, as someone who's not going to sit in this chair for another nine months when this goes into effect, I, I think the person that sits here should be worthy of their wage. And, uh, I, I don't think paying public servants who devote their time and their talent and their resources, uh, is a bad thing. It's not a negative thing. It is an honor to serve. It's a pleasure to serve. But this discussion is not a negative discussion. It's a healthy discussion. So the motion was 50%. I, if you didn't make it, I'll make it.
Second. So the motion is for 50% increase in pay. Did I hear that right?
Yes.
Okay. And you have a second, Mr. Talbot?
I did.
Mr. Cooper makes a motion. Mr. Talbot seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed. Um, Ms. Ireland and Mr. Campbell vote against. Motion passes three to two. Okay. That's all A, B, C, and D, council. Is there anything else we want to take up in the budget tonight? The other thing anybody wanted to take up in the budget?
I, I have one issue that I did not catch in the work session. Um, it's on page 37. And this was another controversial subject four years ago. Um, line item 05410, contributions to the Beckman Center.
You said it was page 37?
Page 37 of 50.
Very bottom.
I got you.
At the very bottom. And I do understand why it was controversial four years ago. I think in the last two years, actually, it's become more apparent to more Americans what the national crisis we faced that we were trying to articulate four years ago, and that is our mental health crisis in our country. Um, we didn't contribute a lot four years ago. We did $2,000 to the Beckman Mental Health Center, which is a regional center, and we're not the only county that contributes to it. Uh, in this budget, we decreased that by 50%, that contribution to $1,000. And at a minimum, I think we should not decrease it, especially considering the mental health crisis that we're more aware of today than we were. I would prefer to, I would prefer we increased it and come, and commensurate with our budget, which has increased by 25% in the last few years.
That certainly would be amenable to bring it up to 2,000 from 1,000.
So that's where I'll start the discussion. Thank you.
That would just be putting it back to where we were used to, to doing before. So, yeah. Are you making a motion? Is that your?
I'm just waiting to hear if there's anyone else that wants to share their thoughts. If not, no one else has any thoughts?
I have none.
I'm for, I'm for, um, you know, I, when I came on the board in 2018, then 2019, I brought up mental health and, uh, with the COVID crisis and all now, I think, thinking about school every day, children that are being homeschooled and, uh, trying to come back to school, trying to come back to school, uh, is just not working out for them mentally. Um, it's not working out for them because they have either have, they have, they have either had someone in their family that have passed on from COVID. So looking at a child, a student every day in school, dealing with that mental problem, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm for raising from 1,000 going back to the 2,000. Um, I talked to Ms. Gail Smith, that it's over the, uh, it's the kind of Beckham Center, Mental Health, and I asked her how was things going? And she said, well, you know, we appreciate the donation that Edgefield County gave us because of, uh, so many things. One, uh, the donation, one that was for our patient to have no money, no insurance, and no other means of support, which is self-paid. And the patient service receive our medication and therapy. Currently, we have 28 self-paid patients. She said medication costs vary from 200 to $2,500 per month. Going around to various schools, talking to students, making sure that they are taking their meds. She said she had to buy many, or, uh, lock carriers for her files to be transported and from school to other, um, coordinator office, um, update equipment so that the parents can come in to sit down and talk about whatever kind of issue, a medical issue that they might be going through. The chairs was all worn out. Some of them have deep holes in them. Um, metal was broken, uh, that they replaced. So yes, I am for, um, mental health and dropping it down to $1,000. I don't know why, but yeah, I would, I would see, I would like to see the, um, Edgefield County Beckham Center, mental health go back up.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to see if maybe we can invite them to come and talk to us and explain to us and to, um, the citizens what, what services they are providing, what they are using this 2,000, how they are contributing and helping. I, I think that's a good idea to have them, um, justify these funds and, and show us how they're using them. They did it way back when, when we first gave them the 2,000. I wasn't up here, I was down there. But I remember that. But I think it would not be a bad idea to have them come back and, and, and do that again. I'd like to see that.
Well, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'm in favor of raising it back up to where it was two years ago, give or take.
So I'm, I'll make a motion that we restore it to what it was the last three years. And I would ask that when they come, if we can ask them to bring the state budget and, and that we can compare what other counties are contributing to this, as well as the state and federal contributions. So I make a motion, we raise it back to what it has been the last three years.
Mr. Cooper makes a motion. Dr. Kenyon seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed. Amends the budget then to affect that to $2,000. Any other item we need to take up in the budget tonight? Just a, two more readings, of course. Okay. Hearing none. We're up to then, I will close that council. No, I'm sorry, got to pass the budget. What am I thinking about? Got excited about all the votes we were having. All right. So if there are no more amendments, then is there a motion? Let me get my number here, to give first reading to, uh, the budget ordinance number 2122781.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Talbot makes a motion. There are second.
Second.
And Mr. Cooper seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
Mr. Chairman, you do mean as amended, correct?
As amended, yes.
Okay. I didn't hear that word.
I'm sorry. As amended, yes. Since we amended it. All right. Motion passes unanimously. Next is comments from the public. So I'll ask Ms. Ubank, since she can give me that list. And we'll see who's left that might be on the list. Thank you. All right. Uh, first up is Kathy Eckery? I should know that by now. And as opposed to the public hearing, these are five-minute or less for everybody.
Um, this is in regard to the feasibility study for the Betis Academy Road. Um, I've been addressing this committee several times now. I'm opposed to the destruction of the Betis Academy community. I worry about the, uh, road expansion and overdevelopment of that particular area. If we're going to have a feasibility study to work on roads and traffic for Betis Academy, I would like to see us have a feasibility, bu, feasibility study to preserve Betis Academy community as well. And I don't know how to go about doing that. I have talked to Dr. Kenyon about this. But to me, before the bulldozers come and start plowing everything up and knocking everything out of the way, I think we need to look at what we've got. It's an asset. It's a heritage. It's a, um, legacy. And I think we're not paying enough attention to that particular area of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know the next person has left, so the last person is, uh, is it Nathan York? Did I say that right?
And since I only get five minutes, you know you're getting out of here soon. Um, first came in front of you, uh, Nathan York, 269 Colles Springs Road. Um, good evening. The first time I came to you is reference to the land ordinance, land management ordinance. And I left with, with a plea for caution moving forward in making the, the decisions concerning the land management and, and different aspects of that. And I'm coming to you with the same plea, be cautious, because over the last two county council meetings, uh, it, it's, it, there's a whole lot of dollar signs being thrown out everywhere, all over the place. We had a massive discussion here concerning tax exempt stat, uh, tax exemptions and letting people out of paying taxes. You, you, you felt quite, uh, passionate about that, um, Councilwoman Kenyon. I, 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 I believe as, as a citizen of this county, my first dollar that is paid to a government entity comes here, then to the state, and then to the federal powers up on the Potomac. Um, however, when I look at, at what costs things are coming up, I, I think the, the Stryker Medical, um, and we, we talked about this on Saturday, uh, the, the Stryker Medical stretchers. When I read the thing, I think it was last week, it was $20,000 for a stretcher. I went online and found another stretcher with the ambulatory assist for 10,000, half the cost. Are we being judicious in, in what it is that we're looking for? This is, this is the same stretcher at half the cost. Plus, it has the ambulatory load assist, the, the XPS system in it. Um, the letter for, for the, the, the natural resources. And I quote, "We must obtain the letter from Edgefield County Council before completing the project and declaring the property tax exempt." We're giving away taxes. And yet we have a budget surplus of 25% or over 25% over the past couple of years. And, and I think it was what, 7.2 million? You know why? Because we're paying it out here. We're, we're paying that money. Now, Mr. Posdowski came up and said, you're getting 30 million, possibly, from the state. Is any of that coming back? Uh, and, and, and you made the comment, you're, uh, yeah, the, the, you know, comment saying, well, then we may not have to increase taxes in the future, which may be good. That's okay. I don't care about pay increases. I think a man should be compensated for what they do. Absolutely, I do. Um, as representatives, for me, I believe you should be compensated for what you do. I've been a public servant since I was 18 years old, still am. My pay increases come from the federal Congress, federal Congress, when they vote themselves their 2.5% raise. Then I get a 1% raise. So my pay raises come whenever they vote themselves in. Is there something that can be done here that ties your salaries with the rest of the county, so that we're not playing politics with raises? I mean, that, that, that to me sounds like it's a smart ma, move. Then, then there is no pointing fingers when it comes to election time. Everybody gets a, a 1.2% raise, whatever it is you guys come up with. That's fine by me. But when we start talking about paying part-time salaries as it is in exhibit, I think, five, part-time salaries is $70 an hour? That, that's insane to me. 65 or $67,000 annually for a part-time employee, and you guys are worried about a 25% increase for you? I mean, I've never seen a part-time employee get 67,000. That's more than double the average salary of our state-elected representatives for a part-time salary of a county. Why, why are we arguing over your pennies when we're willing to pay 67,000 to a part-time employee at $70 an hour? So I'm going to close with this. I'm going to end it with this. I'm going to ask you one question after I read this. You brought up the good book, so here we go. First Annual Eight, and starting verse 11, and then I'll skip down to 14. "This will be the behavior of the king who reigns over you, and he will take the best of your fields, your vineyards, and your olive groves. He will give them to his servants. He will take a tenth of your grain and your vintage, and he will give it to his officers and his servants. He will take, uh, your, your male servants and your female..." He will take your, your male servants and your female servants and your finest young men and your donkeys and put them to his work. He will take a tenth of your sheep, and you will be his servants." When using this surplus of seven point two million dollars that we paid and have given to you in good faith, the only thing I ask is as you spend it, do it judiciously, do it smartly, think about what you're doing, and then give us the receipts. Don't give twenty-five thousand dollars to someone just to do with as they will. Don't give two thousand dollars to mental health. I don't care if you give ten thousand dollars to mental health. What are you using it for? I don't give a care if you give it to the civics. What are you using it for? Is it for the bathroom? Do it. For the bathroom, I want the receipt for it. I just want to know where the money's going.
Five minutes?
So that was my question. And you all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last person for, that signed up to do public comments, so council, I'll close that part of the meeting and ask the administrator for his report.
Well, see, I'm the part-time employee that's getting paid all that money, filling a full-time job. I'd be happy to go ahead and give that job up anytime you'd like. Couple of things here. Just wanted to mention, I did mention it at the last meeting that we met for the fifteenth, but the sheriff was honored recently to be able to attend a week-long national leadership program up in Washington. He's the only sheriff that was honored to go ahead and fulfill that position. The classes will be held at the FBI Academy at Quantico the first week in May, and it's a great opportunity for us and the county. Some good news concerning the jail that was brought up earlier, the law enforcement center. The, we were projecting, at least I was told, we were projecting maybe about a million dollars a year in sales tax revenue. We are actually receiving, the first two checks we received, one was for five hundred forty-three thousand, the other one was for five hundred sixty-four. That's every quarter. That will add up to fifteen point four million during that one cent period of time. If that's the case, where we thought we might have to go three or four sessions, we'll be able to do that in two, maybe three at most. So we're receiving about double what we thought we'd get through the sales tax. So I think that's great news for the county. This, again, is part of the economy of what we have here in Edgefield County. That's all.
Any questions for the administrator? Okay, hearing none. Thank you. I just have a couple of quick comments on my side. Counsel, you may be familiar, or may not be familiar, with the name Kell, K-E-L-L, Kell Anderson. Kell Anderson just joined Will Williams' organization to help with existing industry needs in our county. And so Will Williams and Kell Anderson and I visited two longtime existing industries last month. We had good reports from both, and there's a potential for expansion from both, so I just wanted to pass that along. And of course, I'm not going to identify them publicly, because those are, those are private issues for them to decide what they're going to do about expansions. Also, the vice chair, the administrator, and the assistant administrator, we all went to North Augusta to talk to the mayor and the city administrator there. We initiated this meeting. We had a great conversation about their future plans, and we discussed potential projects that we could work together on. I'm very encouraged by the dialogue, and I look forward to additional discussions with them. We'll ensure we bring any potential projects to the table early, involve the public, and we'll make the right decisions for Edgefield County. And that's all I have tonight, council. There being no other business, I'd certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seven.
Seven.
Ms. Ireland makes a motion, and Mr. Talbert seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.